Twenty fifteen, City Council Regular Meeting to order and to ask for those who would like to join myself and the council in the Pledge of Allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The published agenda shows our next item of business to be a briefing under special business, but we're going to reverse that with audience comments and move now to audience's comments. I'd like to take a moment to recognize those of you in the audience from the Summerhill neighborhood. Thank you for joining us tonight to share your concerns. As a community, our hearts go out to the family and loved ones affected by this tragedy. We join our entire community in mourning. Our investigation is continuing and our officers are working in collaboration with the Washington State Patrol's Accident Investigation Unit. While a council meeting is not a question-and-answer session, it is an opportunity for you to share your thoughts with the mayor and the city council. We ask that you please limit your comments to five minutes or fewer. Again, thank you for joining us tonight to share your comments on this and any other topic. Citizens' comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions that we make. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment will have the opportunity to do so. When recognized, please use the lectern and speak into the microphone. State your name, address, and relationship to the city. For example, resident property owner or business owner. Again, please limit your comments to five minutes. You have written comments or other information that you would like to share with us, please provide those to the city clerk. And with that, I would ask, who is the first person to sign up to speak this evening?
First on the list, we have Hank Thomas, followed by Malia Greening. Hank, did you wish to speak?
He can't hear. Let Hank know.
One of the things that happens as the years go by is the hearing goes away. Too much time in engine rooms, so I didn't hear my name. My name is Hank Thomas. I live at 3105 Douglas Court Southwest in Issaquah, and I am a past city councillor as well as being a property owner. Some of you know that I've kept over the years since I was on the council a pretty extensive set of records, minutes, and agenda bills and whatnot, and I keep them in a word-searchable database. And when this youngster died in the crosswalk at Oak Crest and Newport Way, I remembered hearing about that intersection when I was on the council. And so I did my word search and saw what came up. And what I came away with is while the audience comments that I remember was largely about safety along the Newport Way corridor between Oak Crest and SR 900, it was also about the intersection and getting across that intersection. And the drivers sometimes got a little carried away with their right foot. And so I kind of factored that in, and when I did my word search, I learned that much of the discussion, I'll say perhaps a more official sense, was that we were dealing with projects to do something about this section of infrastructure, and the projects were driven largely by transportation concurrency. We were failing concurrency at the time. And exactly how much of the priority scale went to concurrency and how much went to safety, we can't really say, but what we do know as a child is now no longer with us. And so I'm just here tonight, I wanted to just ask you to please, as you go forward and think about what's the right thing to do with this intersection, with that section of roadway, as we go forward, please try to remember to keep safety of pedestrians high on the list. There are many, many things that need to be considered when we think about fixing a roadway, but let's be sure we haven't left the safety of people in a crosswalk out of our thinking. The crosswalk, as we now know, can be violated, and the sad reality is a four-year-old boy has taught us that lesson. Thank you very much.
Malia Greening, followed by Chris Ray.
Hello, Mayor, City Council, and community. My name is Malia Greening-Bechtel. My family and I live in Old Issaquah, just two blocks from here. I am a mother, teacher in the Issaquah School District, and a bicyclist. I was bicycling on my way home last week and came upon the accident where young Hao Chen lost his life. I'm here today to share with you my concerns about the pedestrian crosswalks on Newport Way found at Northwest Oak Crest Drive, Northwest Pine Cone Drive, and Southeast 54th Street. I will be presenting images and video of the following: trees obstructing view on the crosswalks, speed and marketing signs distracting from the crosswalk, speed signs, forty mile per hour being an excessive speed on the Newport S-curves, which impairs reaction times that I will show you in a video, and pedestrian flashing walk signs in those crosswalks that don't work four out of five times. They only work one out of five times. So let me pull up my slideshow here. Okay, so this is approaching Oak Crest Drive. You can see that the trees are blocking this crosswalk right here. This is where he was hit. Most of the crosswalk is shaded; visibility is greatly impaired, as you can see up there. This is heading eastbound. You can see where all the flowers are, the left side of the road, and again, all the heavy shading. This is heading westbound. It's almost worse in this picture. You can barely see anything right here. This is westbound Newport. There's a distraction of the sign that says, "This is your speed." As a driver, I'm looking at the speed. This is 54th Street, looking west. The sun is in your face. Here's the crosswalk. Very hard to see. Fifty-fourth Street, looking west, is a closer look. Again, the glare of the sun is really strong. You can't even see the crosswalk right here. Fifty-fourth Street, looking east, there's a noticeable curve, which we call the Newport S-curves, limits sights for pedestrians and drivers. Here's 54th Street, west, turning into this blind sunspot right here. Here's a crosswalk. This is in the late afternoon. Here's Pine Cone. There's pedestrian walk sign over here. You can't even see it as a driver. You can't see it. You will be coming up to it. There it is, as you get close enough to hit someone in the crosswalk, going forty miles per hour. I have some videos. Oh, here's the walking trail on the north side of the street, and developments are on the south side, so when people are having to cross, getting off a bus, children are dropped off on the north side, and often the dark conditions, they have to cross the street to the south side to get to their homes. Here's the entrance to Newport Way, twenty-five miles an hour, but it's not twenty-five, it's forty. Here's some video. Okay, we're gonna go forty miles an hour here, which is the speed limit approaching this crosswalk. I want you to pay attention to what happens when you're driving forty miles an hour and you're approaching the crosswalk. Shadows, you can't see anything. You see a lot of shadows. There's a bicyclist. There's a lot of distractions. There it was, bam, crosswalk. We already crossed it. Headed eastbound towards Issaquah. I'm gonna get the same video going the other direction on the next one. Oh, no, sorry, cut that out. This is my friend trying to cross the street. Notice there's a pedestrian. People aren't stopping. Here's my friend. She hit the button, by the way, and the crosswalk sign didn't turn on. We tested this several times, five times. It worked once. So she's crossing the street. We're gonna do it one more time to show you what happens. Here's my friend. She's gonna hit the crosswalk sign. Nobody's stopping. She hit the sign. There's no lights. No light. Okay, that's the end of my video. As an avid cyclist, I am typically quick to blame drivers in any situation. However, as you can see, I took the driver's perspective in this video and in these pictures on this busy forty mile per hour road, and to show that if we perhaps reduce speed limits, as I know some of you will be suggesting, I don't have suggestions tonight. I'm just providing facts, pictures, and video of what I saw as a driver the other day, last week. And by the way, all the pictures that I took, these first pictures, were taken at eleven thirty in the middle of the day when he was struck by the car. And I wanted to make sure that you all saw the shadows that were there. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
If you can close down the screen first. There you go. And then you can close that box.
I, oh, don't I like throw it away?
That's fine, you can leave that there.
I just pull it up.
And you can close the other box.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then you're free to go.
Okay.
There you go. All right, next on the list is Chris Ray, followed by Tina Conforti.
I'm gonna, sorry, I'm gonna delete this for the city council for their photos of what the video showed.
Hi, I'm Chris Ray, 2498 Northwest Tony Creek Drive in Tallis, a resident of Issaquah. I actually wasn't thinking I would say anything tonight. I wanted to come to the meeting and hear what people had to say, but there were, I had a conversation this morning with somebody, and they were talking about public comment at the city council meetings, and they said to me that oftentimes we're viewed and we do public comments as a little bit out there, a little bit crackpots, and that we just have a hot issue that's something that's burning for us. And so it struck me, since I was coming down today, that a couple months ago, Newport Way was just a hot button for somebody that was trying to get something done, because this is not the first time that this issue has obviously come before the council. And I think there's some lessons that we can take away from this tragedy, and it's a sad way to learn the lessons, but I think when people come and take time out of their busy schedules to testify, I mean, even if it's one person or two people, they really have something very important to say, and they're the tip of an iceberg, and there's something behind what they're having to say, and there are a lot of other people who feel the same way that they do, but don't have the time to come and meet with you or choose not to come and meet with you. And so just some thoughts about the people of Issaquah. The people who live here are incredibly intelligent, caring people, and when they come and speak to the council or a committee or a commission, they have something very important that they want to share. I think when we don't take issues very seriously, it's first and foremost disrespectful, but as we know right now, it's also very, very dangerous, and things that happen just can't be undone. So this is an example of an opportunity that was brought to city staff and to the city council before and wasn't addressed. And I'm gonna give Councilmember Milligan some props here. At the goal-setting session about a month ago, Councilmember Milligan was pushing very hard for citizen engagement and was really driving for changing our view of citizen engagement from a push, that is, we tell all of our citizens what we're doing, and we have Facebook and newsletters and stuff like that, into more of a, how do we engage with citizens and how do we hear what's important to them? And I applaud that because I really do believe that the best way to prevent tragedies like this or other unresolvable issues is to really to address what's important to the people who live here and to listen to them and to factor that into your decision-making. Thank you very much.
Tina Conforti, followed by Troy Schultz.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tina Conforti, and I am a resident of Issaquah, 1220 Okwood Place in Northwest Issaquah. In fact, I am the next-door neighbor of the family lost a little boy, the forty-and-a-half years old. I am sorry if I get a little emotional because it touches my heart. I was as sad as the family there being sad. The little boy, he was playing in my backyard, going under the spring, having lots of fun. We were a very close neighbor. This is a dear family. The family, they, the husband and wife, the husband speaks a little bit English, but the wife doesn't speak English at all. But, and every time that I don't see that little boy there this past week, it really makes me so sad. I want to tell you a story about it the night before. I was, I was sprinkling the grass because it's been so dry. The little boy came over and he says, "Can I go hunt you a sprinkle?" And I said, "Of course you could do that." And I went in the house. It was eight o'clock in the night. I was hungry. I went to get a peanut bar sandwich. And the little boy asked me, "Can I, can I taste your peanut bar?" I said, "Oh, I don't know, because I know they have allergy in the peanuts. Go ask your father if you can have some, and then I will give you some." So he went to by his father, and he went to get, ask permission, came back home, was so happy, "I can have some peanut bar sandwich." So the morning that I went in the house, the day after that he was struck by the car on Newport Way and Oak Crest, Oak Crest Drive, he still had part of the peanut bar that he wanted to take at home, denied it before. He left him in a dish, and he said to his mom, "I want to eat it. Don't throw it away." So what are we gonna wait? How long are we gonna wait to, if there's more accident that happened on that corner? We have a previous accident that happened. Two dogs got killed, a little forty-and-a-half years old, a little angel lost his life. The family are very sad, in a deep, deep sad. We ask that that corner, it should be more protection for the pedestrians to cross and for the resident to go in and out from Oak Crest Drive. It is a sore danger when you cross, when you make a left turn, and also when you make a right. In fact, the previous lady, that she imagined the shade and everything else, it's very hard to see when you make a left turn. So I hope you take in consideration that we're here to have your help, and we see, we don't want to see no more life to be lost on that corner, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Troy Schultz, followed by John Francis.
Hello, Troy Schultz, 2345 Northwest Oak Crest Avenue. I live three houses away from the intersection of Newport Avenue and Oak Crest Drive. About four years ago, a crosswalk sign was put up on the intersection of Newport Way and Northwest Oak Crest Drive for reasons to alert drivers to stop at the intersection when a school bus was stopped to pick up or drop off students. On many occasions, I would see drivers disregard the intersection and stop school buses and drive right through. The intersection had on both sides a button to push to warn drivers of a pedestrian crossing. When the button was pressed, eight tiny yellow Christmas lights would flash per sign. If driving from east to west, the lights appeared in visible indirect sunlight. To be fair, drivers would stop about thirty percent of the time going in either direction. On March 12, 2012, about 8:00 a.m., I took my dogs for their morning walk. I pushed the crosswalk sign button and waited for my opportunity to cross. I made it to the middle of the intersection, and I happened to look to my right, and all I saw was a front-end grill of a truck approaching me at a fast rate. The only thing that came to my mind was, "I don't want to die," and I fell backwards, and my left arm went forwards. In a brief moment of shock, I was lying in the street, wondering what just happened. All I heard was a woman screaming, and there I saw both my dogs, both dead and mutilated in front of me. The truck did not stop. More and more people complained again about lowering the speed limit or placing a camera at the crosswalk, because in the neighborhood, we all knew that it was only a matter of time before a child was going to be hit, well, a child was hit. The current speed limit for Newport Way is forty miles per hour, and it needs to be lowered. It is the only residential area that has a forty miles per hour speed limit. Thank you.
John Francis, followed by Hart Sugarman.
I also live at 2345 Northwest Oak Crest Drive, resident of Issaquah. My husband just went over the tragedy that became us, so I won't go into that again, but I do want to come before you today to show my support for improvements to the intersection of Northwest Newport Way and Northwest Oak Crest Drive. This is a dangerous intersection, and of course, you're all aware of the latest tragedy at this location. I gotta say, it's just like playing Russian roulette when you're pulling out of Northwest Oak Crest Drive onto Northwest Newport Way. Cars come out of the blind corner coming eastbound before you realize it, and then turning off a Newport Way onto Oak Crest Drive is just inviting a rear-end collision. Constantly, as I'm waiting for traffic, I gotta look in my rearview mirror just because people will not stop. I personally have had close encounters in that intersection, and fortunately, I'm a little faster than Troy is, because he has a disability. But the crosswalk is the worst yet. For whatever reason, people don't stop at this crosswalk. Maybe it's poorly lit signs, maybe it's the blind corner, but in any case, a reduced speed limit would give people more time to be aware and more time to stop. I've complained to the city before about this on numerous occasions, and it's fallen on deaf ears. So I was looking today, and I see the city is also in preliminary review of the Burgsma subdivision. It's got more houses on Northwest Newport Way, another seventy-eight single detached houses up in the wildlife area. They're also in a land use review of the mole property with four hundred apartments and another, which has six hundred and seventy bedrooms on Newport Way. Now, you're also preliminary reviewing a, placing a senior living facility with a hundred and thirty-six units, also on Newport Way. So with this increased traffic, the situation's only gonna get worse. So both a lower speed limit of thirty miles an hour and stop signs would be the best solution to this intersection and the crosswalk. The National Highway Traffic Safety Commission did a study that showed that higher vehicle speeds are strongly associated with both a greater likelihood of a pedestrian crash occurrence and more serious resulting pedestrian injury. If a person is struck by a car going forty miles per hour, there's a fatality rate of eighty percent. If hit by a car going thirty miles an hour, that drops in half to forty percent. It's five percent at twenty miles an hour, but that's unreasonable on a street. Thirty miles an hour is reasonable to cut the possibility of a fatality in half. So again, I've complained numerous times to the city. The only responses we get are that the engineers have determined the speed, and in fact, our former mayor sent me a letter that said, and I quote, "That people will drive at a speed they feel comfortable driving." That was the answer I got when my dogs were killed. So as far as I'm concerned up until this point, and this is why I come before the council, is because up until this time, the city has really just kind of disregarded our concerns. And so we ask your help in getting change in this neighborhood, but I'd like to know why the city up to this point has fought this change so hard. Who's it benefiting? What's the motivation? And lastly, you know, is that motivation to resist this change worth another life? Thank you.
Hart Sugarman, followed by Amy Miller.
Good evening, Mayor Butler and council members. My name is Hart Sugarman. I'm a resident of Summerhill Community in Issaquah for over nineteen years. My address is 2550 Northwest Oak Crest Drive. We have suffered a tragedy in our community. On Friday, June 26, a little four-year-old boy was struck while in the crosswalk at our intersection of Newport Way and Northwest Oak Crest Drive. He died the next day. This incident has devastated the boy's family, it's affected our community, and will plague the woman driver from Kohani for the rest of her life. I have come before city council on numerous occasions, have written letters to the mayor's office, and submitted requests directly to city administrators to address the concerns about Newport Way. Tonight, I'm gonna submit another citizen action request as it relates to a specific section of Newport Way from the intersection of Northwest Oak Crest Drive to Southeast 54th Street to, once and for all, finally address our concerns. As mentioned, on March 12, 2012, two lives were also lost at the same intersection, and over the years, we've seen dead deer in the road as they're struck by cars. So tonight, this is not a request, this is a demand, a demand for action to be taken so another life will not be lost. Three specific intersections have similar characteristics where crosswalks are not a solution: Newport Way at Northwest Oak Crest Drive, Newport Way at Northwest Pine Cone Drive, Newport Way at Southeast 54th Street. All three share the same concerns and require the same solution. In fact, just last month, a personal injury accident happened at the intersection of Southeast 54th Street. We cannot change the geography or the topography of this specific section of Newport Way. We cannot change the curves of the road or improve the limited visibility and the associated limited sight lines, and we cannot bring back this little boy. We can, however, make changes by reducing the speed limit from forty miles an hour to twenty-five as a way of communicating to the drivers and alerting them that they're approaching a residential area and be cautious as they approach. And get rid of the nickname Newport Speedway. That has to change. Why is a two-lane Newport Way forty miles an hour at this intersection or this location when all other areas of Newport Way are thirty and twenty-five miles an hour? Other roads that are forty miles an hour have four lanes or more. We have a two-lane winding road traveling through a residential area. Limited sight means limited reaction time. Drivers can't process all the information in the best-of-road conditions as on June 26. It only gets worse when it rains and when it's dark. And during the school year, the afternoon school bus drops the children off on the north side of Newport Way as they have to cross the street to go home on the south side. The city's official speed limit is twenty-five miles an hour, and there's a purpose for that. Reduced speed is to alert drivers and prepare them for specific conditions that apply. We cannot change the growth of the city as more homes and condominiums will be built. The volumes of cars traveling on Newport Way will steadily increase over the years as many drivers take this route as a shortcut from State Road 900 to I-90. Easy for them to whiz by our neighborhood, but difficult for us to exit our street. With a steady stream of cars going eastbound and westbound, it's like threading a needle as we have to accelerate to get out of our neighborhood when there's a break in traffic. This section of Newport Way is a residential area with homes and condominiums. We have Summerhill, Samamish Point, Spyglass Hill, Bentley House, and Pine Cone Community, including the additional homes that were just built. There's also a hiking trailhead near this location, and hikers park their vehicles along the south shoulder. This roadway is also having bike lanes in both directions.
One minute remaining.
There's a lot going on and a lot the drivers have to process. As they travel through the section roadway, road signs are totally blocked from view, as mentioned before, Pine Cone. There's no single solution. It takes a two-pronged approach. Firstly, reduce the speed limit to twenty-five miles an hour as an awareness of our residential area, and secondly, install all-way stop signs at these three intersections. In combination, it'll provide a safe environment for pedestrians, cyclists, and cars, and this should be done expeditiously. I think it would be appropriate for the mayor and council members to meet with the community, not as part of the healing process, not just as part of the healing process, but to agree on a workable solution to bring actual change. Stand where we stand, see what we see. Stand where we stand, see what we see, cross the street to gain a better understanding. Thank you very much.
Amy Miller, followed by Karen Bowman.
My name is Amy Miller. I live at 2465 Northwest Oakcrest Drive, and I'm a resident and property owner here. As any sort of governing body, you have the responsibility of balancing multiple often conflicting needs. And when it comes to traffic, you have to balance what drivers need: speed, efficiency, the ability to commute, a complete commute, and pedestrian safety, biker safety, even those drivers' safety. And what I think everyone here is saying is, when it comes to this section of Newport Way Northwest, we've skewed a little far towards speed and efficiency and a little bit away from this idea of safety. Multiple people have come before the city council before and made these requests, and thus far, the response has been, to a certain extent, well, the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few. It's unfortunate that these neighborhoods are not able to get out of their homes, they feel unsafe, but there are a lot of needs for those who are trying to commute. I wrote a petition to say that me as a neighborhood wanna stand united, and we wanna say that there needs to be some change, whether it's speed limit, whether it's the stop sign, some other pedestrian markings. And I sent it out only to our homeowners association. And then our homeowners posted it to Facebook, and they sent it out to other people in Issaquah. And the petition was out for five days, and we have 1,087 signatures, including 509 citizens of Issaquah. So as much as we wanna believe it's just our neighborhood, we're sad, we're frustrated, we're upset. It's not us, it's our community as a whole saying, we've dropped the ball, something needs to change. Now, a number of people have said, there are people who will not come talk to the city council, but they did comment on this petition. And I wanna give you a chance to hear what some of those who will not speak to you have to say. Having lived there for two years and putting my children on a school bus every day, I've seen too many people speed through the lit-up school bus stop sign and the lit-up crosswalk. Numerous calls to the police have done absolutely nothing. I travel this road three to four times a day, and people are driving 15 to 20 miles faster than the posted speed limit. I live on the other side of the freeway, and the speed limit does make a difference because everyone I'm seeing drives five to 10 miles over this posted limit, and ours is set at 30. You need to lower this limit, and you need to trust the people who live on the road and stop relying on a model of traffic. They don't live on this road, and until you do, we're the ones who know best. I've seen three accidents on Newport Way in one and a half years. We've been lucky that Issaquah's obsession with moving drivers at the highest possible speed hasn't killed more people. Take a stand, lower speed limits citywide, make Issaquah a place where we don't respond to complaints about traffic by endangering our most vulnerable citizens. This was an unfortunate accident, but from this point on, no one in this room gets to say that anything that happens on that road was an unforeseen accident. Whatever we decide to do today going forward, if there's another accident, we'll have to go to bed that night and think about what we did to prevent it, if anything. So I ask you to please take this seriously. None of us underestimate your responsibility in trying to balance the needs of a community, but your community is speaking out, and they're saying, this is what we want. As representatives of us, the people, this is what we want. Thank you very much.
Karen, you're next on the list, followed by Spencer Hayes.
Good evening, council. My name is Karen Beam. I live at 985 Mountain Park Boulevard Southwest up on Squawk Mountain. And some of you know me as a longtime bicycle pedestrian advocate for the 23 years I've lived in Issaquah. I feel compelled to give Issaquah a failing grade at this point. It's pretty sad. No deaths are acceptable, whether they are two dogs, let alone a four-year-old child. Now is the time to get a fix for pedestrian safety, specifically at Newport Way and Oakcrest Drive, and put it at the top of the heap. And one time, so I've ridden that road hundreds of times on my bike, hundreds. And a number of years ago, I was inbound coming home to Issaquah, and there's an oncoming car that decided to pass another car. And there was a woman with a stroller right in front of me. That was not, it was very smart. So many suggestions for the intersection of Newport Way and Oakcrest are coming forth, such as lowering the speed limit, and many of us have asked for this through the years only to be told traffic studies do not warrant the change. Speed bumps on either side of Oakcrest, traffic signals, stop sign, more lighting for the sidewalk, raised sidewalk. And one thing that I, I think some signage in advance would be helpful, advance warning signs that a pedestrian signal is activated, an example of what they do between Leavenworth and Wenatchee at the lights on State Route 2, where they, you get a flashing light saying this light's gonna change. US 395 north of Sparks, Nevada used to have a similar warning signal. I am confident that the city will find a workable solution. If the state can put up signals for elk in the area overrun Olympic Peninsula on Crystal Mountain Boulevard, we certainly can do the same for pedestrians. As an addendum, I will be submitting a citizen's action request for the East Lake Samami's Trail and Southeast 56th, another potential hotspot of problems. But that won't, I won't do that tonight. Thank you.
Last on my list, Spencer Hayes.
Hello, council. My name is Spencer Hayes. I live at 1506 16th Avenue Northeast. I'm a resident of Issaquah. What I do on a daily basis, I'm a civil engineer. I design roadways and highways. Currently, I'm designing roadways and highways for the city of Bellevue to make way for the East Link Light Rail. Part of the design that we do for roadways and highways is stopping sight distance calculations and sight distance calculations. And what I'm here today is to ask the council to encourage the engineers at the city to perform more of these design calculations on all problematic intersections, not just at the aforementioned problematic intersection that we have seen tonight. I'm confident that the city will be able to do all these calculations properly and find problems. If it's not the intersection that we have seen tonight, what intersection will be next with the increased population growth that we've seen over the last two years? I can honestly say that there will probably be another intersection that you will see at another council meeting that will be emotionally charged. Thank you.
That concludes the list.
Is there anyone else in the audience desiring to speak who has not signed up? And I believe I saw another hand in the back. Yes, if you could work your way forward and take a seat in the front row and be prepared once the current speaker speaks.
Mr. Council, ladies and gentlemen, I'm a victim of a car accident which happened December 21st by, I'm a resident of 18707 Southeast Newport Way in Issaquah. I lived there for seven years, and I'm a victim of car accident which happened in December 21st, 2014. The, another, I have over there a video, but I don't know how to use the computer over there. I can show you later if you would like to. And the car accident happened at 5:00 in the evening approximately. So I was in a consciousness for four hours, and my wife was in a consciousness for eight hours. Since this time, you know, the police come and they did an investigation, and I said, you know, why the speed over there is 40 miles per hour? And the police said to me, you know, we are working on this. Ladies and gentlemen, one hour before, two of my grandkids was sitting in the back of my car. I'll show you the pictures that you would see. The car was smashed like, like a harmonica. Just a second, lady, help me. Just a second. Yeah, this one. Okay, yeah. I'll show you right now the car accident. Yeah, car, car, go car, go car accident. Yes, the first, double click. This is my car. I stopped, make a left turn to my apartment. This is the, you see over there, everything is here. This is the result of the car accident. Let me just, no, this does not show up. I don't know. Just a second. Yes, yeah, okay, yeah. If you can see, it's a junk, it's not a car. I was a normal man, I was walking, now I cannot walk. I'm handicapped to the end of my life. I don't know how much God gave me. There is no sidewalk by our community, starting from Montrix Waterfall until Lakewood Boulevard. There is none one pedestrian, not, none one, how do you say the zebra when you pass the street? Crosswalk, none one, one and a half mile away. Those people who turn from the Lakewood from Exit 13, they like, run over there like a crazy, like a racist, you know? One tried to go faster than another one. I talked to the police department, he said, we are working on this. Excuse me, I don't see any, any movement over there. It's real big speed. If you can see on, what's his name, on the video, I stay, I just did the left turn, I have to go to my home. And this happened with me. So you have to do something, please. This is the number one. Number two, while I'm here, and I represent, I was talking to people from my apartment, from my house, put some public transportation. It will slow down the, what's his name, the traffic. If you would make the bus over there, we have 210 bus, yes? So if you would make the bus running every half an hour, it would be not so bad. And one more, from old people, make some public transportation to the Swedish hospital. It's hard to reach the hospital. You, please, work on this one. For old people, it's not so easy to reach, you know? So I'll be very appreciative if you would listen to us. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to make a copy? I don't know if it's possible, if it's possible.
Hey, are you ready?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, mayor and fellow council members. My name is Stephen Mack. I live in 2144 Northwest Pacific U Place, Issaquah property owner residence here. And so I live in the Spyglass Hill complex, and I gamble two times a day, not that I go to casino, but I cross Newport Way to walk to the transit center every day to go to work. So I have to cross Newport Way two times a day, and every time is a gamble. I don't even get a crosswalk, I don't even get a sidewalk. So every day, I just cross at the Spyglass Hill intersection, the, the east driveway, because there's just no sidewalk connection to even use the crosswalk at where the accidents happened. So here today, I'd like to show you some of the gadgets that I use to cross the street. This is a family member gave it to me for Christmas, just so that I can cross the road safely. I carried my whistle in case if a car come to me, and hopefully, I can blow it and something would stop the car. And I download an app on my phone that's just show a better blinking light, a strobe light, so that other people can see me to cross the road. So here in front of you today, I really urge you to come up with a context-sensitive solutions. The context could be changing in the city of Issaquah, and please, help me to go to work safely. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please. If there's anyone else in the audience who has not signed up desiring to speak, if you would come and take a seat in the front row.
Hi, my name's Lindsay Fromm, and I work at the nonprofit organization Forterra. And I actually wanted to comment on a topic that you'll be hearing about later this evening regarding the updates to the transfer of development rights and interlocal agreement with King County. I also wanna offer my condolences to the community, and I do urge the council to make smart choices regarding pedestrian and biker safety. Forterra is a conservation and community building organization, and we've long been invested in the health, sustainability, and prosperity of the city and its surrounding natural areas. Issaquah has been a member of Forterra's Cascade Agenda Cities Program since 2006, resolving to align its parks, planning, and open space policies with the goal of the Cascade Agenda. Forterra is also closely involved in the development of the Central Issaquah Plan and has explored new infrastructure financing opportunities for the city to better serve its growing population. Forterra also helped the city to update its transfer of development rights program. TDR is an important tool that Issaquah adopted in 2005 and updated in 2011. Through voluntary market-based transactions, developers can build projects at higher densities in designated areas within the city while permanently protecting rural and resource land in King County. This program enables the conservation of land in the Issaquah Creek Basin and other areas, and has already met with success. King County has been supportive of Issaquah's conservation and growth management efforts, and this interlocal agreement strengthens this important relationship in several ways. By expanding the TDR sending area to Sauk Mountain, users of TDR in Issaquah gain more choices. Conservation opportunities will include more natural areas that are important to the city, and it reaffirms and strengthens the city's commitment to pursuing market-based incentives for growth and conservation. So as the demand for new construction continues in Issaquah, these updates to the interlocal agreement will help the city achieve its growth and conservation objectives fairly and without public expense. So Forterra encourages the city to continue its partnership with King County and to pursue the use of transfer of development rights in future projects. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Kapler.
Good evening, thank you. Couple of items, as president of Squawp Trails Club, and then as an individual on my third item. TDR, certainly, I spent about five days in Portland with Ann going to meetings and myself using train, trolley, transit, and the tram down there to go hiking. But every time I came out of the woods and to a subdivision, there was a big problem with parking, was real obvious. We've avoided most of those problems in Issaquah here on Squawk and Cougar because we've really not emphasized trailheads in the city to the, to the masses. And King County has been really good about getting trailheads for us that use, that help us keep our in-city trailheads relatively small and more for city residents and the regional users having regional facilities. TDR is one of the ways we can help to get the county to have money to, to be able to provide those facilities. We also have a lot of property on East Cougar we'd like to see acquired by the county, and if TDRs are available, that would help the county make those purchases. And that would just be in support, of course, of the, is the, the city's plan for the valley floor. There's other properties the county's working on acquiring that I don't even wanna mention where they are because we don't wanna cause the prices to go up. Crosswalks, there's a major trailhead there for 3,300 and some acres on Cougar Mountain right next to Summer Hill and at the Big Tree Ridge Trailhead. It's a very small trailhead, and it's very important because of the access to transit there. With, through the rally development, you might remember, there's supposed to be a pedestrian bicycle bridge over Tibbetts, which will facilitate not only people in the rally development, but at the transit center getting to Cougar Mountain. There's 622... There's 622 units in preliminary plat stage right now. There's also directly across the street from the crosswalk we're talking about mostly, mostly talking about that crosswalk tonight, is the Gatewood-Smallwood proposal, which isn't at the preliminary plat stage. And then rally has significant development, which will generate more pedestrians potentially trying to get across to the south side of the road. I'm hoping the people here tonight will take an interest in all those plats and get to those meetings, because that's where it'll be very important to see what improvements for the long term we get in Newport to make biking and walking much safer. Now, taking off my trailhead, or my trails club to the senior center. You've all seen the infamous letter. We got a situation of a private social club with using our tax dollars, delivering very little in the way of services to the seniors in our community that really need services. I have one more request for a non-existent document, but just in case it's out there. On June 25th, Issaquah Press, page three, quoting the executive director of the senior center, "After completing an independent review, the mayor expressed his strong support and complimented the center on its leadership and operations." I'm requesting that copy of that independent review. And there'll be a couple other requests for some more detailed financial information, but I'm not making those tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name's David Waggoner, and my address is 360 Northwest Dogwood Street, apartment K204, Issaquah, Washington. I'm a lifelong resident of Issaquah. It's been my home since 1945, with the exception of 26 years serving the United States Army all over the world. I can tell you that as a retired metro bus driver, and a bus driver that drove Issaquah School District children for six years, there is nothing, nothing more important than pedestrian safety. And I want to make that clear. They drive it home to us all the time behind those big rigs to make sure that we watch for little children, and I will tell you that there is nothing more important. The second thing I want to talk about is a story that was in Issaquah Press on June the 25th. That story was about someone who was trespassed from the senior center. I am that someone. I am standing here in front of you because I am not afraid to face anybody in this city about what happened. And I can tell you that the letter that came out last Friday, that you have all received a copy of, is absolutely filled with lies and false accusations. I ask you, I beg you, to do a full investigation of what is put in this letter. I promise you that you will come to a conclusion that will benefit all the seniors in that senior center. Thank you for your time.
I want to make it full. And then... And click, okay. Thank you.
I live at 2690 Northwest Oakwood Drive since 1986. Invited by the mayor, I served on the Central Area Task Force. I come before you as a former Summer Hill homeowner president, and also a tax-paying resident who has lived off Newport, and who is concerned with all the unsafe design of the road, the numerous accidents and the near accidents, as well as excessive speed along Newport Way. I request that this document be presented and submitted into record, public record tonight, along with the other documents that I've already submitted. I come to demand that you move forward on the new car that Mr. Sugarman, third time, presented here tonight. I would request that you call a neighborhood meeting in the very near future to address Newport Way Northwest safety issues voiced here tonight and in the petition tonight. I would request that you make this an open-door policy. Let our voices be heard and reflected in your decision to move forward. That being said, a residential street constructed and maintained, or that we get the result, a safe residential street that is constructed and maintained to Issaquah City standards. Newport Way is classified a minor ulterior, not a freeway. Definition. I would ask that you go back and listen to Mr. Sugarman's 2003 car presented to you, where he used it, a lot of knowledge to put that together, and little action was taken by this city. I would ask that the many times that we have come forward requesting attention, when little or nothing was done, I remind you that over 30 years ago, Issaquah City Council committed to bring Newport Way, our city's western boundary, up to city standards for a minor ulterior. The city identified the need and committed to make, with annexation and the approving of the two developments out there, that this would become a residential street. Newport Way's redesign and safety enhancement project has appeared year after year on your project list, and many years it was number one, but no funding. Now, in the 2015 tip list, you have dropped us down to 27th, with no funding until 2030. This is not acceptable. It is time for the city bring the residential street up to city standards. The city must make this project happen. You must allow, that, you cannot allow any more developments along this road, which will increase traffic, without doing a safety study. You encourage ever-growing volumes of traffic along Newport Way, but have never lowered the speed limit or placed stop signs at intersections. You have made Newport Way a speedway to I-90. You have required new development, you have not required new development to fund portions of this project. And in many cases, point down, with our development down the road, they aren't even built out to city standards. I would challenge you to drive in and out of any of those, let alone walk along the road. Yes, you have put, made some effort. You've put marked crosswalks at several intersections to give us a perceived access to, perceived safe wa, excuse me, perceived safe access to a safe bermed walkway. You have put yellow 40 mile an hour flashing lights across our crosswalk, located behind our crosswalk, 40 miles an hour. And we know all that means is go faster. The city standards are based on 85% rule, so, and they have, don't have enough funding for, to fund enough policemen. So hey, we're not going to get a speeding ticket. Why slow down? Normally, when we use that crosswalk, they never put their brake lights on. They just go faster, or they honk at us. Therefore, I am requesting documentation. First, I would like the city to please provide copies of safety and engineering design studies done by the city and the codes that support a safe 40 miles an hour speed limit along Newport Way. Note, the western entrance states 25 miles an hour, as you've seen in the city, and other people have talked. Secondly, I request that you provide copies of safety and engineering design studies done and used by the city and the codes you were based on to support the 40 mile an hour flashing light along there, and to justify marking the crosswalks that you have in these three locations that were called out today. I would direct you to the city website, which clearly says, and I quote, "Studies indicate the more accidents involved, pedestrians actually occur in a marked crosswalk than an unmarked, so the people at the other end of Newport Way actually have a better chance of living than we do."
You have one minute remaining.
Third request, that the city provide copies of the berm that you've put in. Knowing that this is part of the Mountainstown Greenway, number three on their page, they recognize that this isn't a safe berm. So why are we using it? Why are we directed to it? Fifth, I would request that the city provide copies of traffic studies along this way that has anything to do with safety, bus stops, future plans for roadways, that indicate weather conditions or geographies. I have seen none, and I would like copies of what you've based your decisions on. This is an intersection where we have schoolchildren using it, and it needs to be made safe, not only on us, but I am requesting that the whole study, the whole project that was asked for 30 years ago, gets moved to the top of the list, and you meet with the community, you hear our concerns, and you do something. And I know there's an accident going on, but you have enough evidence to do something now and not wait until that evidence is done. I've been in a similar case like this, and I know it can be two years before we get that report back. We cannot wait two years.
You have 15 seconds.
We don't want anybody else killed. How many more lives will it take for you to do something? I made this comment to you three years ago, when Hart presented his second CER. You did nothing then. But how many more lives does it take for you, to justify for you to do something? How many? Thank you.
Is there anyone else desiring to speak who has not signed up? Ms. Marsh.
My name's Connie Marsh. I have a store at 1175 Northwest Gilman Boulevard, and also live on Squawk. So a tragedy in Issaquah where someone dies is a community tragedy. It's not a neighborhood tragedy. How many of us have not driven Newport Way just down this area? In a blink of an eye, it could have been us who killed somebody. And yet, we sit here and think, well, this is just one intersection in our town, and it is Summer Hill, and we need to talk to those people only. The city has to grieve the errors too. And so one thing I would request would be a press release for the entire community, recognizing the feelings of all, because we are a community and we do care about everybody in the town. And this intersection is only one example of dangerous intersections in our town. So I would say that this is a lesson to be learned for the entire city. There are, I don't know, I think, neighborhood after neighborhood after neighborhood. We have West Lake Samamish, they want their sidewalks. Squawk Mountain needs a sidewalk down because people have to walk in the middle of the street to get to the Transit Center. Issaquah Highlands is frankly scary with the traffic as it, as it wanders about, however it goes. I don't think you can show a single community area that does not have a safety need. And for many years, it seems that the city has simply said, "We need to get cars through Issaquah as quickly as possible." And now you're looking to potentially do a bond issue for a series of transportation projects that are on RTIP, many of which have very little to do with safety. And I think, as everyone has said over and over and over, safety needs to be the priority so that our community never has to grieve any intersection or accident again. Our comprehensive plan and our central area plan have now said that pedestrians are a priority as compared to cars. So we need to entirely readjust our way of thinking and actually make that so. It is a primary policy that y'all have adopted. Now, how many years have I been listening to the concerns on this particular intersection and heard the same thing? Well, that's how fast people go. But we know that you can adjust the way the roads are built in order to make people slow down. If they don't feel comfortable driving that fast, they will not drive that fast any longer. So some of our dollars need to be made to just reduce the speeds that everybody goes through town on all of these roads, and how do you add those to our transportation lists? Can we do that? Just a second. Can you do that now? And I don't know the answer to that question, but it would be really nice. Salary commission, I don't think the council needs more money. They need a staff person to support them because their hours dwindle away, and their lives dwindle away as they have to do research. And can the use of the money from the 200 route funnel instead into Orca card support so that you could have a free Orca card and pop on any of the buses, and so you actually get convenient service? Okay. Bye.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience desiring to speak this evening? Anyone else desiring to speak? Third and final call, anyone else desiring to speak who has not had an opportunity? Seeing none, then, audience comments are closed, and we'll move to committee and regional reports, beginning with Councilmember Milligan.
No report, thank you.
Whoops, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
I am reminded by our council president that we're now moving to Special Business Agenda Bill 7028, Sound Transit/Metro Presentation. And I want to thank those from out of town who are, who waited patiently this evening for audience comments as they move into...
Hi. I apologize. So...
That's okay. Kristin Leeson, our long-range planner for the introduction.
Yes, exactly. So we have invited Sound Transit and Metro here tonight to give a brief presentation on the work that they have been doing. As you know, in 2014, Sound Transit updated its long-range plan. Since then, they have been working to put together a list of projects that should be studied as a part of, to make a final list for the Sound Transit vote coming up. Metro is also in the process of updating its long-range plan. And over the past year, the two organizations have worked closely together to coordinate their efforts, and so they have been asked to come here and talk to you about what they have been up to. And so for Sound Transit, Karen Kitces will be talking, and Andrea Toll is here to answer any questions about projects regarding ST3, and Stephen Hunt will be presenting for Metro.
Thank you. My name's Stephen Hunt, and I'm the project manager for the King County Metro Long Range Plan. And as is evident tonight, transportation is an important issue, and we recognize that as we talk about what the public transportation network needs to be for all of King County. We want to reiterate to you all our commitment to making sure that there is a robust network of transit services that meet travel demand and needs throughout the entire county. And so we have been engaged in a process for the last six months of trying to get input from cities and others, and just want to share with you our sincere desire to serve the communities that are within King County well with transit. So tonight, I'll sum this up with kind of three basic points that we wanted to cover. One is how we are integrating with Sound Transit, both in schedule and in deliverables. We'll get into a little bit of detail about what the long-range planning process is for Metro and Sound Transit 3, and then talk a little bit about next steps. So first, from the beginning, this has been conceived as an integrated project with Sound Transit. We began the development of our strategic plan back in 2013 and recognized that there, well, it was updated in 2013, there was a lot of work that was done prior to that, but we recognized there was a need for a picture of what transit would look like in the future with Sound Transit. would look like. And we are coordinating both our deliverables and our timeline. We want to, so that when Sound Transit 3 is available in June of 2016, we'll be able to have a complete picture of what transit will look like, not just what Sound Transit's expansion plans might be in 2016, but what King County Metro would project to do as well in that timeframe, so that you can have one place to go to to see what the entire transportation, public transportation network would look like. This is a quick illustration of what the planning timeline looks like. We began this process in earnest in January of this year. We are in the phase right now of collecting information about what priorities are from different communities. We have been working with a technical advisory committee, which is made up of representatives from all the cities across King County on what the evaluation method should be for our long-range plan. And we've been coordinating with Sound Transit as they have begun developing, moving from their long-range plan into the system plan. We are anticipating that our goal is that, as I said earlier, when we have, when Sound Transit has, Sound Transit 3 out, which is their list of projects, that they would be looking to fund with an additional ballot measure, we would be able to say, this is the way that all those folks who maybe don't live right on the rail line might be able to access transit via transit, access the light rail via transit, and how would we be able to leverage that regional investment. We've been working with Sound Transit on joint public outreach. So this past June, when Sound Transit did their, began their public outreach process for Sound Transit 3, we were there, and we will continue to be with Sound Transit as they move forward and engage the public as well on the specifics of what the transit network needs to be to support mobility throughout the county. Ultimately, as I mentioned, we want to be in a place where we can have one place, one map, of this is what all transit will look like in King County. King County Metro's initiative for developing a long-range plan officially came out of the 2013 update to the strategic plan. There was a new strategy adopted, which realized that we needed a more specific long-range plan that identified how transit would grow throughout King County, and that was strategy And so, why is it that we felt the need to do this, and what's going on right now to help us, encourage us to do this planning process? As we have seen since the recession, since the recession bottomed out, transit ridership has continued to grow since 2013, excuse me, since 2010 across all our different providers. And we recognize that King County is only one of a series of transit providers in the county, but transit demand is growing across all those different providers. So we saw, we recognize a need for an integrated picture of what transit looks like. You're all aware of the funding issues that King County has had over the last several years, and the long-range plan will play a critical role in identifying what long-term needs Metro has in terms of our funding and helping us get to a better place for transit mobility. We also recognize that the way people are traveling today is different than the way it was, and so travel patterns and behaviors are changing. People are accepting transit as a travel option more readily than they have in the past, and so we want to be prepared for helping communities travel the way they desire. So what's going to be in the King County Metro Long Range Plan are kind of three components. There'll be a service network that looks both at 2025, when ST2 will be complete, as well as 2040, which is roughly the same time horizon for Sound Transit 3, as well as the Puget Sound Regional Council Long Range Transportation Plan. In addition to that service network, we will be talking about what the supporting capital investments would be necessary to deliver that service network, and we will also be identifying what the funding assumptions need to be, again, to realize that future. As stated, we recognize this is a coordinated effort, and it's not just with Sound Transit, but we're reaching out to our partners with WashDOT, PSRC, and all the different providers across King County, and most importantly, with the local jurisdictions. So I mentioned that we began the process in January. Now, we are, where we asked the public and our stakeholders what they saw the role of transit being and how we could help them meet their goals. We're now in the phase where we are looking at three different approaches to how we could design transit service to meet those needs, and we're evaluating those. The end of this year, we'll be moving towards preliminary draft, and with the expectation that, again, by the middle of 2016, we'll be in a place to describe what that transit network looks like as Sound Transit 3 is finalized. Really quickly, to go through what we've done to date, we've, in January, we formed the Technical Advisory Committee, which is, again, city staffers from all the different cities across King County have convened on roughly a bimonthly schedule to talk about how the communities are growing. Kristin Leeson from Issaquah has been your representative there. She's been great to help support us in representing Issaquah's needs, as well as helping us know what your goals are. There's a community advisory group, which is a group of 25 residents from across King County that we asked for applications to come to, and we had, we received interest from across King County, so there are cities from across King County represented in that. We've conducted several website surveys with well over 3,000, this is dated a little bit now, but well over 3,000 community members from 38 of 39 cities across King County have been represented there. We've held three community visioning events. That was, again, the beginning part of our process in Seattle, Federal Way, and Bellevue. And we've, we participated in the joint open houses with Sound Transit last month in Seattle, Redmond, and Federal Way. So really quickly, just want to talk about what the process is for getting to a final concept. I mentioned that we're in the phase now of looking at different alternatives, and so that's where this, these bubbles are in the funnel diagram, where we're looking at an emphasis that looks at frequent, express, and local kinds of services, and we are testing those to understand how each of those, that orientation of transit service would impact people's mobility and integration with Sound Transit. We're collecting feedback from the public and from the TAC on each of those approaches, and over the next several months, we'll be looking at what we've learned from those different concepts to develop a preliminary, it says preferred here, but it will be a preliminary, a draft preliminary concept late this fall. So real quick, just want to mention what we've got so far on the different approaches. So we've tried to present these three different approaches in terms of what they do and what they don't do well. So each of these represent a series of trade-offs in how transit could be oriented and the way it will impact people's mobility and accessibility. So I mentioned there's a frequent express and local concept. Each of them focus, each of them take the growth and divide it differently among those types of service. So in the frequent concept, we're talking about focusing most of our resources on frequent service, so that's 15 minutes, 10 to 15 minutes all day long, 20 hours a day. So that requires us to serve fewer corridors, so we're not on as many, on as many streets. The express network, we're talking about 50% of the, of all of King County Metro services in 2040 being on express service, and that's two-way, all-day services. So they're more similar to, say, the Sound Transit Regional Express than maybe Metro peak-only services. And then, local services would be those that run at longer headways or less often, but are serving communities getting deeper into neighborhoods. And so, when we, and those represent more or less the three most common kinds of requests that we receive from the public about, well, we need our service to come more often, we need it to be more direct to where we're going, we need it to be closer to where I live. So we took each of these to say, so what do you get when you really invest in one of those kinds of service? Recognizing that we're using this as a learning process. So when you focus services on, say, on the frequent concept, that's the type of service that ends up with the highest ridership, connects the most people to the most number of jobs, takes advantage of the combined network. By that, we mean it's easier for you to transfer from one service to another, which allows us to leverage Sound Transit services a little bit more, and it has a relatively high proximity to transit, at least compared to the other two. That comes at the disadvantage of having a little bit longer travel times in the peak. You may be transferring a little bit more. On the express network, the results that we've found so far is it has the fastest travel times in the peak. That's not surprising for certain trips, and where it does serve people, it serves them with direct and fast trips. So it's attractive in that sense. It does reasonably well on ridership, as well as connecting people to jobs, again, because it's attracting a lot of that commute, that commute trip by connecting people directly to job centers. Has the lowest proximity to transit because you've got the least number of stops, and the stop spacing is so far. So it might, the way you might experience that in Issaquah is there would be stops, obviously, at the transit centers, but, and then maybe a couple others, but it's not like you're going to have a whole lot of access points to transit in certain communities across King County. But once you get there, you're able to get to a lot of places. On the local network, you have the highest proximity to transit you've got, which means the bus stops are closest to people, but you have the lowest ridership because those, to get that far into the neighborhoods and spread that service, so far, it needs to get thinner, and you end up waiting for the bus longer, and so people take it less. So that's kind of the high-level trade-offs between these concepts. And where we are right now is asking people to weigh in on that, both through the online surveys and the open houses, and with our technical advisory committee, we'll be going out to the cities to say, what do you see, what do you see of value in each of these different networks and how they're serving your community? I mentioned that we just completed a series of open houses, joint open houses with Sound Transit. In July, we will be going, our main event going on in July is we'll be going out to the regional TAC meetings, where we'll have a time to really roll up our sleeves and get a lot of input from your city staffers. And that is the end of my presentation.
We're moving now to Sound Transit. Erin, good evening.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having us today. I appreciate your time. As Stephen said, we are engaging in an exciting process in King County, as well as the other districts, other parts of the Sound Transit district, in Snohomish and Pierce County, where we are actively trying to plan together with our local transit partners on how folks can get to our services and then get around their various communities. I won't go through too much of this timeline, except to say that we are at an important point in our process this month, following a series of public meetings and engaging in some online information and survey gathering for the board, of which Mayor Butler serves, the Sound Transit Board, to be in a place to make some decisions about what projects are best for us to study that could become part of a possible system plan in November of next year. One thing that's happened since we sent this presentation over is that in the legislature, transportation package that would include the ability for Sound Transit to ask the voters, would give us authority to ask the voters to approve different funding tools for potential projects, was passed, and it's awaiting signing by the governor. So we've had some positive news on that front. We've been engaging in a long-range planning effort for the last year or so, and we're now at a point where all the great ideas that we've received from the public of where we could go and how we could better connect communities, we need to start looking at that and compiling some technical information and kind of marrying the different possibilities to the funding we might think we could have available to pay for that. Sound Transit's long-range plan, unlike Metro's, is completely fiscally unconstrained. It's not, it doesn't have any time limits or funding. It's really a vision, and now we need to look more specifically at what the next system plan could be if you think about Sound Transit 2 and Sound Move is the predecessors to Sound Transit 3. We are also experiencing ridership growth, as Stephen discussed, and by the time Sound Transit 2 is completed in 2023 and looking out to 2025, with these projects opening, University Link, Northgate, and East Link, and service north and further south, we anticipate it being up to over 100 million riders. The area is growing. More and more people are moving to not only Seattle, but other parts of the Puget Sound region, and we are trying to, as best we can, provide transit services to help facilitate that growth. These are core priorities that our board has placed as kind of the foundation in looking at how we should grow. One of the primary ones, which is called completing the spine, it refers to completing the light rail spine. At the end of ST2, that spine will go from Linwood in the north, down to Kent Des Moines in the south, and across I-90 to Bellevue. Finishing the spine would be service from Everett down to Tacoma, and then finishing the spine to downtown Redmond. One question that was brought forward by Mayor Butler was, where should we go next? What are the next logical steps? You'll see that in the bottom right. That's a really important question for communities like Issaquah. Other elements, how we access our facilities, what will enable ridership to be maximized, how can we connect regional centers, Issaquah being a regional center within the PSRC long-range plan, also thinking of things like TOD or land use and how that connects with our other partners, as well as providing equity across our district. In order to be at a place for our boards to be able to make some informed choices, we have drafted a list of projects that are not designed to be the endpoint of how the system could develop, but a starting point for asking the question to the public, do we have this list right? Are there other places that you might be interested in going that we need to study? Staff, in working with our board, developed a list of categories for these first projects. And one term that's, looks a little funky, but it's called realigned projects. When ST2 was completed, the Sound Transit 2 system plan, and it was approved by voters, it was November 2008, the Great Recession happened shortly thereafter. So some of the funding that we thought would become available to finish projects didn't materialize. We kind of had to readjust what we thought could be built, so this would enable those projects to be finished sooner. We also looked at how can we enhance the existing system. There were a series of corridor studies that, on the east side, included light rail as a potential corridor out to Issaquah, and we'll talk more about that in a second. It also included some potential things across the system that our board discussed, the long-range plan, as well as facilities to support expansion, such as additional bus bases and light rail facilities. Where the project list currently stands, these are the projects highlighted on the east side of our district. One is looking at, EO1 is really the downtown, the connection of Bellevue, from Bellevue to downtown Redmond, completing the light rail spine. The next is Bus Rapid Transit on 405 from Linwood to Sea-Tac with direct access ramps, off-board fare collection, and other inline stops. Totem Lake Issaquah via Bellevue is light rail, so this would extend from Tacoma to Issaquah via the east side rail corridor with a connection point, transfer point option in Bellevue. We also have a direct access ramp in the Renton area, as well as ST Express supporting bus service. One of the elements that we need to provide our board with technical information is kind of what is the framework for the capital projects related to light rail and bus rapid transit that we should study? And then, taking a look at that, along with Metro in particular, how can we provide the network that will maximize that, those capital projects? So we are going to be developing more information on how the ST Express bus network will interact with that. There were also a couple of other studies related to future service expansion that could include connecting to Semamish and Redmond via Issaquah Highlands, via Semamish and Redmond. Just a couple of quick last-minute notes. We are finishing the end of our public comment period. We have a website that has all this information, I'll show that in a second, and provides information on this draft list, also gives a survey where folks can rank in priority order, kind of what they think is important. One thing that I would ask y'all's help with is we're looking for letters from jurisdictions and interested parties by July 15th. Then we can help inform our board at two meetings in July what we're hearing from jurisdictions, so they can have that piece of information. In August, we are looking to be in a place to update our draft list, finalize that list based on projects that have gotten additional input from both jurisdictions and the public. And then, we will come back in the fall, late fall, and update... In August, we are looking to be in a place to update our draft list, finalize that list based on projects that have gotten additional input from both jurisdictions and the public. And then we will come back in the fall, late fall, and update our board with information on those projects. That information will include capital costs, conceptual capital cost estimates, ridership, and travel time, other pieces of information like that. With limited time, we had, if there's any questions on East Link, we can provide that. Integration and coordination with Metro and our other transit partners is happening on a weekly basis, and we will be continuing to do that because we're utilizing a lot of the same technical information. We had to fill in the pieces for each other about how transit should grow. These are our websites, both Metro's Long Range Plan and Sound Transit's, and surveys are available on both of those websites for more information and also to help us look at how we should grow. Thank you.
Karen and Stephen, thank you very, very much. Are there questions of either one of those right now? Karen did mention that Sound Transit is looking for input from jurisdictions on what they would like to see, and as a reminder, under regular business, we will be looking at a letter and a joint interest statement later on in our meeting. So that was actually a whirlwind tour.
And that was a really good opportunity. In the data that you have, do you have any forecasts? If, and I was glad to see, you know, the Issaquah's name show up in that list of potential projects, what type of, like, percentage of trips, or what would be your forecast of use of an extension all the way to Issaquah? What percentage of trips? How would that, how much relief to the roadway system? Do you have a forecast along those lines, or is it too early?
It's a little bit too early. We can provide you information that was looked at in a study as far as ridership numbers for that corridor that was looked at kind of by itself a year ago, but as far as the overall system and putting all the pieces together, we are still at the process of refining that to the level that would tell you what you're looking for right now. Our timeframe for that is where the October, November timeframe to have information, including ridership for all these various corridors.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments at this time? I want to thank you both for your patience this evening and for coming, and it's great to see King County Metro and Sound Transit up speaking together about the future of transit in the region.
Thank you for your time.
I'd like to point out that Councilmember Barber is in excused absence this evening, and now is the appropriate time to move to a committee and regional reports. Councilmember Milligan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No report.
Councilmember Polly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Growth Management Policy Board met on July 2nd. There were no items to be voted on at that meeting. They were for information. The agenda items included a regional centers framework update. There are currently 29 designated centers in the region, and the update is looking at how do centers get re-designated and how many centers are too many, and can we define subregional centers, smaller centers, and how would they be defined and how would they be integrated? Second item on the agenda was Making Buildings Smarter. It was a presentation that I had seen Dale Constantine do at the Microsoft campus. It's about technology that's out there to create sustainable, energy-efficient monitoring of buildings. And the last item they had was the Puget Sound Regional Travel Study, which is a household survey of 6,400 households discussing their traffic patterns and mode uses. Very interesting. The next meeting is, there is no meeting in August. The next meeting is September 3rd from 10 to 12 at PSRC's office downtown. There was no Land and Shore meeting in July, and a date for our August meeting has yet to be determined, so we do not have any agenda information tonight.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Marts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Services and Safety Committee will be meeting on Tuesday, July 14th, 5:30 in the Eagle Room across the street. Topics will include pool renovation, public art update, Agenda Bill 7,006 amendments to the 2015 budget, Agenda Bill 7,009, city participation in Main Street tax incentive program, and pending approval of the consent agenda to hear this evening, Agenda Bill 7019, park naming of Hillside Park, Agenda Bill 7027, closeout of council goals, safe drug-free, safe slash drug-free community in Rainier Trail, and Agenda Bill 7029, DSD staffing request. There are a couple of other possible topics, but you'll have to come find out if they're going to be on because we don't know yet and who says that Land and Shore gets all the fun. Then the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will be meeting this Wednesday, July 8th, at 7:00 PM at Renton City Hall. The best starts for kids, I am going to briefly want to chat about with the rest of you in good of the order. The King County Growth Management Policy Council will be meeting on Wednesday, July 22nd, at 4:00 PM in the PSRC chambers. As I previously mentioned, the topic will be climate change, although the exact agenda has not been finalized. Regional law and social justice will be, I don't have the exact date, but it's going to be the end of this month. It's a while away still. Emergency Management Advisory Council will be meeting next Tuesday, July 14th, at 1:00 PM at the Emergency Management Center for King County in Renton. The agenda is still to be decided. And then, last but not least, the State Emergency Management Council will be meeting this Thursday from 9:00 AM till noon at Camp Murray in Tacoma. And I am freshly minted on that committee, so I do not have an agenda yet. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to members of the viewing public. The Council Infrastructure Committee is expected to next meet on Thursday, July 16th. That will be at 5:30 PM in the Pickering Room of City Hall Northwest. The agenda has not yet been formalized, but I can tell you that upon approval of tonight's consent agenda, we will have Agenda Bill 6844, Notice of Intent to Assume City of Bellevue Sewer and Water Utility Within South Cove Greenwood Point. We will have Agenda Bill 7025, Amendment to the Lower Reed Infiltration Gallery Interlocal Agreement, and we will have Agenda Bill 7012, 2015 Regional Aerial Imagery Funding Agreement. In addition, the committee is expected to discuss the routing of the Route 200, which was an item we had deferred from a previous month's meeting that we did not have. And then, lastly, and again, the agenda has not yet been formalized, but as a former Newport Way resident and someone who's been touched personally by crosswalk accidents, I would like the committee to also have a discussion concerning Newport Way from the city limits to state Route 900, and that might provide an opportunity for the committee to have an in-depth public discussion on safety and mobility topics on that stretch of road, and that could be something that the public would be welcome to provide comment on as well at that time. So be looking on the city website for the actual published agenda and the expected start times of each of those particular agenda items. In addition, the East Side Transportation Partnership will be meeting this Friday, July 10th. Unfortunately, I will be out of town, and so someone else will be chairing that meeting, but I can tell you that the expected agenda includes a discussion of Interstate 405 Corridor and further update on the Technology Symposium that is currently planned for early October, and the efforts of the Planning Committee working on that. And there may be other agenda items as well to come from that. So I'm sure I will get a full report from the leadership team and happy to speak with the mayor and with NINA about what happens at the meeting. That concludes my reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. East Side Fire and Rescue Board Finance Committee met last week, and we began our initial review of the proposed 2016 budget. We will continue that review at our next meeting, which is the third Tuesday of each month, so whatever the third Tuesday of July is, that's when we'll be meeting, and that meeting is always at 4:00 at Headquarters Station 175 Newport Way Northwest. The East Side Fire and Rescue Board will meet this Thursday at 4:00 PM, also at Headquarters. And the agenda, I have an agenda. We're scheduled to take action on the following items. We're going to consider retaining a consultant to facilitate hiring than the new fire chief. And also, we will be, I think we're scheduled to maybe take action on a couple of labor agreements. As always, we will be getting a status report on the annual goals, and we're going to be considering an administrative pay study and a training engine proposal, and I think those are the major items, and that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Winterside.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no regional reports, though I want to take this opportunity, Josh, that the next week, the Infrastructure Committee, there might be that, I think Stacey and I might both have conflicts. So I know you announced the date, and that's very important, you know, if, for people might make note of those important agenda topics. So we're going to, let's, just everybody, let's make that tentative, and either we'll move the date or we'll get subs for both of us, but let's take that up as soon as possible, and we can update that hopefully by Wednesday this week. That's my report.
Thank you. In addition to the written mayor's report that I provided, I want to highlight one item. On June, Saturday, June 27th, Brett Heath, our Public Works Operations Director, and I attended the American Radio Relay League Field Day event, which was held this year at Luther Burbank Park on Mercer Island. For the first time, this was a combined effort, including Mercer Island, Bellevue, Redmond, the Isquah Community Communications Support Team, and the Boeing HAM support team, who all came together on Saturday and Sunday. The purpose of this international event is one in which amateur radio operators compete to make as many radio contacts as possible and educate interested parties about ham radio and test equipment under field conditions. It's the first time we had our new communications trailer out to see how that worked in the field, so it was an opportunity to think a little bit about emergency management and emergency backup communication should the need arise. And with that, that concludes the mayor's report this evening. I would ask if the accounts payable and payroll have been reviewed?
Yes.
And I would ask the clerk then to read into the record the consent calendar.
The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance for study, and if authorized, council action will occur by single motion regarding the following items. Item A seeks approval of accounts payables and payroll dated July 6. Items B, C, and D seek approval of minutes for the following meetings, City Council's special meeting, goal-setting retreat of June 6, City Council regular meeting of June 15, and Committee of the Whole meeting of June 23. Items E, F, and I seek referral to the Council Infrastructure Committee. They are AB 6844, Notice of Intent to Assume City of Bellevue Sewer and Water Utility Within South Cove Greenwood Point, AB 7012, the 2015 Regional Arterial Imagery Funding Agreement, and AB 7025, Amendment to the L-Rig Interlocal Agreement. Item G, AB 7016, a surplus city of equipment. This seeks authorization. Items H, J, and K seek referral to Council Services and Safety Committee. They are AB 7019, a park naming regarding Hillside Park, AB 7027, closeout of council goals, specific to safe drug-free community in Rainier Trail, and AB 7029, Development Services Department 2015 staffing request. This concludes the reading.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar? With that, then, I would call on Council President Winterside.
I move that we adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to regular business, the first item under regular business, Agenda Bill 6984, Transfer Development Rights, TDR Interlocal Agreement with King County to authorize, and this is coming back from the Land and Shore Committee, Councilmember Polly.
Mr. Mayor, one second. I don't have my agenda open. So this agenda bill came to Land and Shore, and it is an update to an interlocal agreement with King County. Land and Shore actually left the agenda bill more or less as, is with a slight change in that there was a recommendation originally from King County and staff to include additional land on Cougar Mountain as a sending area, yeah, sorry, as a sending area, and Land and Shore moved that line slightly to the backside of Squawk Mountain, so there's a small change in the plan. Otherwise, they supported the amendments to the agreement, and staff will have a presentation. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Council, Keith Niven, Economic Development Director. So the city has an existing agenda, an existing interlocal agreement with King County related to transfer development rights. There are really four main issues that are being addressed by this proposed amendment to the interlocal agreement. As Councilmember Polly identified, one of the items is to change the geography of rural King County properties that could be sending sites for transfer of development rights into the city of Issaquah, and we could talk about that a little bit more in a second. The second is to increase the total number of transfer of development rights that the city will take from King County from 75 to 125, so add 50 additional. The third is to establish a conversion rate for King County TDRs into the city. This was an important piece for the county to have added into the interlocal agreement. We can talk about that if you're interested. And the fourth item is to modify the duration of this interlocal agreement from 12 years to indefinite. And part of the rationale there is sometimes, and especially since we saw with the recession, there can be blips in the economy that could cause the need for this agreement to extend much longer than 12 years. So the biggest thing that Land and Shore talked about was the geography. And initially, King County asked for us to include the entirety of May Creek Basin into the sending sites that could come into the city. And really, the way I understand this, this initially kind of came up because of the Erickson property, which you can see is right here. It's in the May Creek Basin. It was an area that was proposed to be logged, and King County stepped forward, purchased the property, and now has the development rights that they would like to potentially sell at some point. So as you can see, that does lie within the May Creek Basin, but as we talked about it at committee, the committee really landed on Issaquah-Renton Road and Issaquah-May Valley Road as really a more appropriate boundary in terms of taking a portion of the May Creek Basin, because I think part of this area over here, which really is more tributary to Renton, did not make as much sense to the committee in terms of adding benefit to the residents of Issaquah. So there was agreement to take kind of this piece, but not this piece, and that's what this map shows. So with that, that's really the entirety of this. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy. Oh, there was one councilmember, Milligan, brought up. We have one recital, which wasn't quite accurate, and we missed it when we went through the edits. So this one that reads, "The city is in the process of establishing a transfer of development rights ordinance." We have one. So the suggestion this evening would be to modify that to say, whereas the city has a transfer of development rights program. So assuming the council approves that edit, I would suggest we include that in the motion this evening. Now it'll be done.
Are there questions of Keith before I entertain a motion? With that, then, Councilmember Scher.
Thank you. So I wasn't involved in any of the committee-level discussions, and in fact, I don't think I've ever been at a committee meeting that's talked about TDRs that we've had. So can you just explain more basically, and this, I think, will also be helpful to the public who has probably not been part of these discussions either, what does this essentially do? do? What does a TDR do? How does it benefit the city? What does voting on the agenda bill do for the city, just at a real basic level?
Sure. So the whole premise of the TDR program is to move private development rights from properties that are more appropriate to be preserved to properties that are more appropriate for development. So in other words, you know, properties that are located on forested hillsides, next to creeks, you know, prized public open space areas, it's a method for the public to be able to retain those open space properties in perpetuity by allowing the property owner to basically sell their development rights and move them to another location. The city and King County initially entered into this interlocal agreement as a way to facilitate the preservation of critical open spaces, and King County actually ceded the city with $200,000 initially to purchase open space within the city. So this is a mutually beneficial agreement that is being expanded a little bit through this amendment, but primarily, again, I believe the genesis was with the Erickson property, and the public came to a previous Land and Shore Committee and asked for this to happen, and it's just now finally happening.
Thank you.
Yes.
Are there, Council Member Goodman?
Thank you. Keith, can you, I wasn't, I also wasn't part of the committee-level discussions, and I understand TDRs, because I've been part of the discussions before and part of the code amendment a couple of years ago that we had. The conversion rate, can you explain a little bit about that and how we got to these rates? It has, typically, it has been sort of left up to, what, negotiation and money, and now this is, the conversion has to do with TDRs equalling a certain, a number of 3,600 square feet of commercial, or 5.4 residential units or equivalent per TDR. So can you explain the rationale behind that, please?
I'll try, but Darren Greavy with King County is here, and I may ask him to put a finer grain of detail on it if you would like. So the reason why the county has asked to put that conversion rate in here is because basically, if you think about it, let's assume that you own five acres in King County, okay? That's a one house, and that's kind of their highest-density rural property. And so if you're going to go buy that single house on five acres, you're going to likely pay more than you are a single house on one acre in Isaguac, right? Because you're buying more land. So you have kind of a bigger ask that the property owner's going to have for that TDR. And so what this does is it establishes a rural-to-urban conversion rate for someone that's wanting to do that. And why the county found that to be important is for predictability. They felt like that if a developer knew what they were going to be able to get for it, that they might be more likely to buy a county TDR. And I saw Darren got closer, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna take that visual cue to maybe say, Darren, would you like to say maybe a couple of words about that? While I go throwing my input curve. Sure, I will. Thank you, Keith. Darren Greavy with King County. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, for this quick opportunity to speak with you. Transfer development, what this ratio does in the interlocal, and we have it in all our other interlocals with our five other city partners with transfer development rights, is essentially, it gives some surety to the development community that they know what they're going to get when they buy a development right from King County. Right now, they have surety when they buy a development right from, in-city sending site. So this is just putting the development rights from Isaguac Creek Basin and rural King County on equal footing, equal level playing field with the in-city TDR program, which the ILA and O7 that we're updating here now in 2015 was meant to do. And economic studies back in 2012 determined that ratio. When you were doing the Isaguac, Central Isaguac Plan update, you guys hired consultants to do the in-depth economic analysis to say, okay, development rights from the, in the city should give the developer this much square footage in the receiving sites in the city. Development rights from Isaguac Creek Basin in the county should give the developer this much, because as Keith said, there's different prices. Development rights in the city are, what, $10,000 to $15,000. Development rights from the side of Squawk Mountain are more like $60,000. So we have the ratios that you see in the updated interlocal, the 3.6 and the 5,400 square feet. That is the level at which developers would be willing to buy a development right from Squawk Mountain or Isaguac Creek in order to get, in order to make a profit in their project to proceed with the, using TDR. Does that answer your question?
I think so. I had, yes.
Okay.
I had another idea, but it was clearly wrong.
Other questions?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the amended and restated transfer development rights interlocal agreement with King County, and forward the signed document to the King County for action with the amendment that Keith proposed this evening.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Additional discussion or questions? Council Member Martz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Land and Shore. I'm one of the troublemakers on changing the exact area to be covered, but I thought it was important for the community to understand what the concern is. Generally, I think we should focus as much as possible on watersheds that drain through the city of Isaguac, but I think it's also true that we really have a vested interest in the health of all of Squawk Mountain. Squawk is sort of a, one of the, one of the unique and critical areas of the city, and because it's involved in multiple municipalities, I think that this makes sense, and so I'm very supportive of this measure. And once again, thank the committee for addressing my concerns.
Council Member Milligan.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Tola. Couldn't have done it without you. And I, and hearing the questions on the dais tonight, I want to thank everybody for this topic coming into regular business, because this is an important tenet in our land-use philosophy of protecting valuable lands and to make dense populations accommodate those development opportunities. And so I think transfer development rights are just fantastic. So this was great to talk with King County. I want to say that my opinion of our meeting was very collaborative, and I felt that Tola brought great ideas, they were listened to and responded to respectfully, and we all came to a better place in the end. It was very productive. I want to mention in the packet for us and for this council was the Isaguac City Code for municipal code for transfer development rights. And we did not discuss that, and I just wanted to bring that up, that all we did was focus on the change in the ILA. And I would love to discuss someday about our municipal code, because I think that as an evolving tool, that it will continue to get better over time and continue to be more and more productive for these goals that we have in preserving lands. So thank you.
Council President Winterside.
Thank you. So it was about a year ago when the county, I think, started to make noise toward acquiring the land on Squawk Mountain rather than the other buyer who presented themselves, who intended to actually harvest the timber on there. And it was Dave Kapler himself, I remember, contacted me and said, you know, I think, I think Squawk Mountain merits the kind of sensitivity in terms of preserving open space, not only for its intrinsic value, but also to the value of our citizens. And I think, Tola, you said that as well. And that seemed at that time like a really good idea for me. This is our way to play a role in preserving the open space on part of Squawk Mountain and in partnership, you know, with the landowner and with King County. So I'm really thrilled that it's actually got to this part. I want to thank David for his role in seeding that idea, and I'm really intend to support that, and really, kind of, it's kind of neat to see the legislation come to a potential conclusion this night for when it really, the idea hatched about a year ago. So thank you, David.
Other questions or discussion? Are you ready to act? All those in favor of authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute the amended and restated transfer of development rights interlocal agreement with King County, and forward this signed document to King County for action with the revision suggested by Mr. Niven, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to, thank you very, very much, and, thank you, Kevin. Moving now to Agenda Bill 7026, Independent Salary Commission Findings, and introduction by our city clerk, Tina Eggers, who also was advisory and facilitated the process. Take it away, Tina.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Just a brief introduction, I did serve as staff liaison to the 2015 Independent Salary Commission, and it was a pleasure working with this group. They reviewed a lot of data in a very short period of time this evening. We have Bernadette Ann, who served as the chair of the commission. She'll present the formal report. In our audience, we also have Stephanie Johnson and Debbie Mills from HR. So if you have any questions, please let us know. We'd like to make sure that you get the answers that you're looking for. So with that, I'll turn it over to Bernadette Ann.
Delighted to see you this evening, and thank you for chairing the Salary Commission.
It was my pleasure. Mayor Butler and council members, the, and viewing audience, the presentation that follows here, it takes the, it flows through our report that we issued, and for anyone looking for our report or further information, you can find that under the Salary Commission search option on the city's website. I'd like to recognize my, the fellow members of the commission. We had five, and unfortunately, no one was able to attend this evening, but Linda Dunn, Charlie Hafenbrach, Sean Peterson, and Joe Werner was vice chair. Really enjoyed working with these people. Everyone brought very diverse professional backgrounds, and we had some very invigorating discussions as we proceeded through our work. I'd also like to recognize staff, Tina Eggers, Stephanie Johnson, HR analyst, and Diane Marcott, who gave us exceptional support. Stephanie attended seven of our meetings, and Diane, I think, was at least two, maybe three of our meetings, including presentations. Our goal was to finish by June 30. Our first meeting was on May 6. Due to our schedules, we set our deadline as June 16. We were very aggressive. That included, on our first meeting, we set eight open public meetings, including a public hearing. That was 19 hours of meeting time over six weeks, and there wasn't one meeting where we didn't go home with the homework assignment, study, and prep for the next meeting. Our goal was to gather clearance-specific data. The city staff were able to start us off, and we just asked for more. We did go over the Isaguac financial reports for the legislative branch, historical detail by line item, as well as the budget, and then the forecast, looking at where Isaguac has sat as regards what amounts have been spent and budgeted for. We also thank you for your participation. We issued a survey to you. We know it was under a tight timeline, over which you also had other things to do, of course, and we appreciate your candor and the time that you took. We know that you got into it, then you went, oh, gosh, I got to really give some time and do some math and calculate it and go back in, and we appreciate that. We really used what you gave us for your time commitments, the expenses, your input, the feedback that we asked for. We also took data from 20 other cities in the region. We looked at city data based on the demographics, so how are we comparing those, these cities to Isaguac? Population, geographic square miles, how much do each of these city councils manage? Assess valuation, median residence value, collecting as much as we can, city budgets to say, okay, who is comparable to Isaguac, or not, or why. And then we also reviewed three Salary Commission reports that were available to us from other cities as recommended by staff, Kirkland, Mercer Island, and Bothell. First part of our analysis was to understand the key component of salary versus compensation. Everyone thinks of salary. That's what you get paid, $700 a month currently, prior to July 1. But that, we found out quickly, is no longer true when you think about compensation. Compensation has one component of salary. Everyone sees that, they know that number. But the city then, depending on what the city has chosen to give to their council members, they have other costs of what we put termed as overall benefits. So as we looked at the 20 other cities, we found out that other cities offer a plethora of the following. They might give their council members any combination of medical, dental, or vision. There may be, they may reimburse their council members for not only their salary, but a per-meeting fee. Some cities had per-meeting fees that went, that allowed an additional $200 to $750 a month additional compensation to their council members above their salary. $10,000 a year max. One city allowed that to increase over this council member's salary. So we had to make sure things were comparable. Deferred Compensation Plan contribution, did the city, you know, put that in for each council member? Allowances in addition to, or in place of expense reports for like a car allowance or a cell phone allowance. Some cities contributed to life insurance or accidental death and dismemberment policies for their council members. And then lastly, retirement plan participation. What did the cities offer in this realm? Some cities, we only had four cities of our list of 20, which offered zero benefits. So salary was it. That was all. And, but when we looked at salary, we saw that some cities actually added up to a high of $1,700 in benefits to what their council members made as salary. So we really need to shape our mind, it's all compensation, that's what the city's cost is paying for the council members. So then we looked at your results, what you gave us, which was very, very crucial and important, because we need to understand, what does your job, I want to say, job or position as city council member, what does it require of you? And we appreciate all seven members giving us feedback. So from that, we had, we calculated an average of about 55 hours a month, which you gave us as meeting time, prep and study time for those meetings, travel time, engagement with community members, and then if you had other roles that you played as part of city council member in the community, that was an average. We also have, because we're looking at compensation for the deputy council president and council president, we wanted to know how much additional time does those positions require? So we worked with eight to 10 hours for deputy council president and 11 to 20 for council president. Another thing we looked at is, because the current monthly salary levels had, were established in 2002, so that's the last time that council had received an increase. So just what, in the math realm of it, was a CPI or a COLA mathematical calculation from 2002 to 2015? And what we also realized was that when it was last increased in 2002, it was a 40% increase over, in 2001, went from 500 to 700. So, and during that same timeframe, we also know that other elected official, the mayor, had significant big jumps. So Isaguac has a kind of a history of this, not looking at things very often, and then all of a sudden, wham, oh, gosh, we got to do that. So there's a jump. And then we looked at, okay, if we take other cities, what cities do we take? And if we were just averaging their, all those other cities' compensation levels, what number of averages should we use? Should we compare these cities, or these cities, or take this city, cities, and on what basis? So we went through, some of our members were very detailed, going through multiple iterations of trying to get to a number that way. So we, within the purview of Isaguac Municipal Code 2.90, we had a specific thing that we could do, salary and compensation. But we came across some discoveries, so to say, where we felt we really wanted to make recommendations was the strongest thing that we could do. So we had, in our report, we asked a couple things, suggested, word was strongly recommend, that the council members, we felt not everyone participated in expense reimbursement, and of course, that is at your choice, but we also heard that maybe you didn't know that you could get certain expenses reimbursed, or you didn't know how. So we have recommended, and I have seen the HR memo that has come out, a wonderful, I think it's 63-page packet that they have put together, so that you have like a book now. so that you have like, a book now, on how, what you can get reimbursed, how you can do that. And hopefully that, really, hopefully that helps and clear things up. We don't want you having to take money out of your own pocket to do your job if you can also receive reimbursement for that, those expenses. And then also, by looking at the other cities, what they listed, because we received feedback from every city. Stephanie asked her counterpart at every city to give us feedback on their policies and what their compensation levels were like. And so we kept seeing this word, PERS, PERS, PERS. And we're like, what is PERS? And we found out, it's not something we can grant you. It's something that exists because you are an elected official. So we wanted to make sure that if you were not aware of that opportunity, if you qualified, that you are now aware of the ability to participate in PERS, which is the Public Employees Retirement System. And then, because we know, we knew what it sat, what it felt like to sit in the seat of doing this every 13 years, we strongly recommend, can't say that enough, that the Salary Commission is reconvened every two to three years. No less than two probably would be repetitive, and no more than three. For a couple reasons. You want to stay current with the conditions with the market. We want to have a lower impact to city budget when it does make, when market conditions say it's time to make a change. And it's just not at your will, but maybe then you're not compelled to vote yea or nay on reconvening this commission. And who knows, a commission in the future in two years may say, it's fine. We don't need to change anything. But we'd like to see that as well. So our findings, what we were charged with, these are our official report findings, is we found that you were paid considerably less than your comparable counterparts. Now, what does that mean? Your salary was fourth to last of the 21 cities when we looked at a chart. Just salary, okay, forget, there's also compensation. So, and then, I'm just looking at my notes here, I want to make sure I say this correctly. Were we 20th of 21 when it came to full compensation? I'm trying to remember if it were either 18th or 20th. So it was rather low on this, on the scale. We did feel increases are in the long-term best interest of the city and its citizens, meaning we compensate you as best we can to the equitable amount of fairness, so that we can recruit people to run for our council members, and they see that there is some just compensation out there. We recognize that salary and compensation is in recognition of your time, expertise, and commitment that your public service work as a council member requires, but we cannot pay you for actual work performed. Meaning, we're to look at the professional level of services you're providing to the city. We can't compensate you for that. But we do recognize what we're trying to do is honor your time, respect your expertise, and know that you have a significant commitment to this, to this community. So, we also found out that though you're eligible for reimbursement of expenses, the city's cellphone policy reimbursement rate didn't, didn't extend to you. And we just asked why, and they said, well, they don't have, them aren't part of the policy. So we wanted to make you part of the policy. Thought that was only fair. So, our conclusions affected July 1. That was another decision we had. We decided to make it effective immediately, was that council members will go from 700 salary to $1,250 a month, and then deputy council president, $1,350, and council president, $1,450 a month. We also wanted to make sure you're eligible to participate in, if you so choose, the city's 457 Deferred Compensation Plan. So if you chose to defer some of your compensation for tax reasons, or whatever other reasons that you might have, you have the opportunity to do so. And that you do, as part of your expense reimbursements, that you are allowed to participate in the monthly cellphone reimbursement, which is currently valued at $20 a month. So that concludes my presentation of the report. I want to thank you for your service. I think our Commission learned a lot about, if they haven't been to as many meetings as I have, they've learned a lot about what you do and the commitment involved. And I ask you for any questions you might have, that I could answer for you.
Do you have, I don't know if you have any backup slides, but there was a chart that showed, with these new rates,
Yes.
where we fall within comparable municipalities. It was 10 or 12 municipalities, and it, it showed where we were. Is that slide available?
I, I don't have a backup slide. We could find it on the neb, I mean, on the internet here, if you wish to. But I can tell you that right now, Issaquah, and this is an update to the number that we had provided to the Issaquah Press, currently Issaquah ranks 15th.
This is after the adjustment?
This is after the judgment, after the adjustment for both total, for total compensation.
15th out of?
21.
15th out of 21, thank you.
We did not reduce the, we did not decide who's comparable and who's not. We looked at the region, meaning all of our surrounding cities, those in our school district, and then the regular cities that Issaquah normally compares itself to. So I just say, we used everybody.
15th out of 21, though. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Yeah, Bernadette, I just want to thank you for your service, for preparing this report, for organizing and leading the group. Kind of have mixed reaction to this, but it's very clear to me that it was conducted in a very professional and complete manner. I really do appreciate, it was very important to me that you gave this presentation this evening for just full transparency. I mean, we, I doubt any of us knew anything about any of it beforehand. So I think it's a good message. I mean, we got to hear what went on, and also, I think, for the benefit of our citizens, just to be aware of all the information that you compiled and the considerations that you make. So thank you for your time and commitment. I imagine it was voluntary, so thank you.
Anyone else?
May I reckon, I do want to recognize our fellow county Commission member Linda Dunn, who was our main lead on the report writing. So, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
So, actually, sorry, since I sort of moved on to commentary. I, I asked about that, where we ranked, because I think it's very important. I think at a time where, you know, King County is having a hard time with money, and the state is having a hard time with money, you know, I, I think it's important that the, the public understand, I don't think any of the seven of this, seven of us do this to, to make money at it. But I think the original motivation on this was we had a situation where in the last election, we had four people for four positions. And we got four great people. But I know that there was, there was, this was not a unanimous vote to have this commission. And, but those of us who did support it felt it was very important to try to have lively and robust elections. And boy, did we get that this time, right? We got, on, on filing day, we had nine applicants for three positions. I don't know if that's directly related to this or not, but I think that I, I really do appreciate, putting all this in context, I think showing that we're 15th out of 21, I feel very good. You know, typically, when, when you go to re-baseline these things, you know, you sort of wind up on the high side, knowing that everybody else is going to catch up soon. So we'll go from 15th to 18th to 20th at some point, and, and that's all fine. But I, but I think it's important that the public understand that this was not a, you know, none of us will be buying Cadillacs in the near future as a result of this, but that in overall, in overall compensation, we're, we still are at a very modest level. So thank you for putting this in a form that we can go back to the public and feel comfortable discussing with them.
Well, thank you. I, I can say you're 15th out of 21. I hope that doesn't go down to 18th or 20th, in my personal opinion, okay? And regarding the filing deadline, that was one of the things, you know, we, no one knew, we had no attendees at any of our meetings, except for our public hearing, they had one person. But no one knew what direction we were going. I mean, so if any of those people filed thinking, oh, we're going to get a, a significant raise, because you deserve it, they were really guessing. Because, you know, the filing deadline passed, you know, before we were into real air decision phase. So I would, that's, that's my take on that, so.
Our city attorney has a comment he would like to, our question.
Yeah, just because this is a new process, it would be, I think it would be important for the public to understand that although the council did create the Salary Commission, they had no role in the setting of the salaries, and have no role in either accepting or rejecting the salary. That's, they have, they can't accept it, they can't reject it, it just is. The only people that, the only people that can do something are the public that could file a referendum petition on this, if they so chose, to put this to a public vote. But this council can do nothing about it.
That is, that is true. Our, they can do it, file a referendum. And in fact, one of the things, I saw Mr. Scher had his hand up too, so. One of the things in our discussion was, because we didn't know when the next one would meet, and we were concerned about this big, long time again, and a big, long jump that might happen again, we discussed a COLA, or, you know, putting something like that into our findings. And then we realized how that would happen. We would make it, one of our discussion points was to make it equivalent to, say, the director's COLA, which the only other elected official, the mayor, receives. But then we realized that the council votes on that. So we didn't want to give the public any notion that if we lumped them into that group by a COLA or CPI, that then you'd be voting on your own increases. So in lieu of that, we said, please, every two to three years, to help the future Commission members, and just to make things more timely. So that's what we did with that.
Councilmember Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. I know, since Councilmember Barbara couldn't be here tonight, she and I had spoken about this when we took the vote on forming the Commission. And she and I were both extremely supportive because we believed it was a long overdue thing, as, as you pointed out. It'd been a decade or more since this had been analyzed. You know, to piggyback on Tolles' comments, I don't think it's quite often known or realized that council members traditionally have not sought reimbursement. And I know you mentioned that in your report about knowledge of reimbursement procedures, but it's been sort of an unwritten, off-the-books policy amongst council members that, you know, for things like mileage, where your job might ordinarily reimburse you 50 cents a mile to travel to various regional meetings, or the cost of having a meal as part of those meetings. I don't think I've ever seen it in almost eight years, when reviewing Lawrence, that a council member has put in for that. And that's because we, I think, see that as part of our regular business duties in terms of public service. And so while those procedures may exist, and it may be helpful to be aware of them, I say this to reiterate what has been an unofficial policy, but also for those who will take these seats in the near future, starting next year, and my hope that they would continue to perpetuate that policy, because it, as has been mentioned, it's not about the money. But it is, I think, about fairness, and that was really the reason for doing this in the first place. And somebody's going to be 20th, and somebody's going to be first in the region. And so where we fall in that spectrum isn't of particular concern to me. It's really about what is fair for the work that each of us do. And I know there was a mention made in audience comments earlier this evening about, well, maybe instead of salary, looking at a staff person to help you out. And I still fully support the idea of perhaps even a part-time individual. And I don't know if that extra sort of help is considered when we talk about things like compensation, which as you mentioned, includes more than just salary. It's support because of the amount of time that council members have to put in, as you said, an average of 55 hours a month. And I, I, you know, that's an interesting average. I don't know where everybody fell on that spectrum. I know that over the years, that number has probably decreased for me, primarily because of being familiar with the items that we have on our agendas. And so I think the amount of time that someone who's new to the council spends on getting up to speed in that learning curve is going to skew towards the higher end of those number of hours, whereas the amount of hours that someone who's been here and seen the items can easily digest them, it's going to take a little bit less time. But then we get to the big items, like the entire central area plan, or concurrency, and that number's going to go up no matter who you are. So there's a pretty wide range, but I really appreciate the work that, that the Commission put in on coming to this conclusion. And as was pointed out, we had no idea, it could have gone up, it could have gone down. It could have gone anywhere. And this was just about finding what was fair for the work that we do. And, you know, we're not, we're not Bell California, we're not giving ourselves a million bucks here. So this is, you know, a pretty reasonable rate. Thank you very much.
Well, you're welcome. And to address your comment about the staff, that wasn't part of the purview of our, what we were charged with. Well, you know, we didn't have the opportunity to add an FTE or half an FTE. But what we felt was also equally or more important is that we did not hear that directly from anyone in our survey. So we heard that from a third party only. And so we heard other things in our survey. And so that was most important to us, is what you gave us as feedback.
Well, Bernadette, again, thank you very, very much. And thank you for your insights on the work that the Commission did. We thank you and all the members of the Commission. And again, to our city clerk who facilitated the process, some great work. Thank you.
Thank you very much, yes.
Excuse me, Mayor. I just want to do, and no comment, just for the record, I just want to mention, Councilmember Scher talked about an unofficial policy. And I, and I think it's important, I want the public to know that I'm, I was never aware of any unofficial policy. I've never had any conversation with anybody about expenses. It was a personal choice. And I have seen expenditure requests come through. I know that there has been some, and I think that's, that's fine. So I just don't want anybody to think that we had some unwritten, never discussed in public before, unofficial policy. We did not. And I, I make my own personal choice on whether or not I was seeking expense reimbursements. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, now we will move to Agenda Bill 7030, Issaquah Sound Transit 3 input. And for the staff report, Autumn Monahan, Special Assistant to the City Administrator.
Hi, thank you. Again, my name is Autumn Monahan. I've been working closely with our internal transportation mobility team, as well as the mayor, who sits on our Sound Transit Board, to stay engaged on a regional level concerning ST3. As you heard earlier, our deadline to provide input letters is July 15th to the Sound Transit Board on ST3. Tonight, you're considering a resolution that supports two draft documents. The first is a joint interest statement with the cities of Bellevue, Redmond, and Kirkland. The city of Sammamish may also join, and is considering that tomorrow night at their council meeting. This statement shows support for high-level policies representing many major cities on the east side. It was important for us to have a unified approach and provide an east side perspective as Sound Transit shapes ST3. The regional priorities include funding east side needs, connecting regional growth centers with, within the east side, connecting the east side with the region, providing an integrated regional transit system with access enhancements, and supporting system expansion. As you'll note, by design, the joint interest statement is more general in order to reflect broader interests of the east side cities. That said, you're also considering tonight, by the resolution, a letter from specifically the city of Issaquah that outlines our specific priorities. They include light rail from Totem Lake to Issaquah via Bellevue, including a new park and ride in Issaquah, enhanced bus service along the I-90 corridor, and Bus Rabbit Transit along I-405, a high-capacity transit study from the Issaquah Highlands to Overlake via Sammamish and Redmond, a light rail extension from the Overlake Transit Center to southeast Redmond and downtown Redmond, and that also includes a park and ride in north Sammamish, and building a new direct access ramp for HOV access at North 8th Street in Renton. These priorities mostly reflect what's already included in Sound Transit's draft priority project list. And it also reflects the goals outlined in the city's comprehensive plan, including increasing the percentage of trips made by transit, supporting the extension of light rail to Issaquah, and collaborating with neighboring agencies. And with that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Council President Winterstein.
So I'm, I'm grateful that we're doing this. I, I know that it was good to get the report this evening, you know, both from King County and, and Sound Transit. The region has been and will continue to grow. The idea of creating a regional center, which we do have now in, in Issaquah, and connecting that via, connecting that to other regional centers, giving people both today and tomorrow, and into the future, opportunities for travel that don't always involve, you know, single occupancy vehicles. Our region is going to continue to grow. We are on a footing to manage that better than we ever have before, while preserving our existing neighborhoods and focusing both our employment and our population growth within the part of the city that has the capacity to create that, to take that, to create housing and employment opportunities somewhat transit-oriented, which is a model that I believe in as well, that gives people, whether they live here or they work here, opportunities to commute, you know, again, without using opportunities to commute, you know, again, without using an auto vehicle, using public transit. Yeah, I think these are really good goal, I, I like the long-range footing that we're having, I support this resolution. I'm glad we're taking this time to consider offering our voice to the Sound Transit Board as it, as it works on that system study, the scope of that. There is some bit of comments out there, using PSRC's own data, how the ridership increase, PSRC jurisdiction-wide, so to speak, would only, would only take about 1% of the new trips between now and 2040. Hence my question earlier in the evening, yeah, but what about the increase along the I-90 corridor between Issaquah and the employment centers, primarily of Seattle, but also of Bellevue and Redmond? It's significantly greater than 1%. I look forward to seeing that data there. And so I, I think that, I also have a, I've raised, my wife and I have raised four children, and it's, I think our community has done a remarkable job to help that generation understand that we all have duties and obligations to seek alternatives into that, just getting in the car isn't and shouldn't always just be the automatic choice. And I think reinforcing that, helping people grow up with the culture and the ethic, that public transportation and their lifestyle choices, where they live, and how they move around, are important. People recognize that, and I think it's very important that we establish that for, as a long-term character of Issaquah. I think we're headed in that direction, and I'm going to be supporting this, and I'm really hoping that, I know there was an initial ambition that maybe just to complete a 30% design in Sound Transit 3, and now I see this as a resolution asked, no, actually, let's build it, and I think that that's appropriate, I think it's justified, and I'm going to be supporting this resolution.
Is that a motion?
It can be. Yeah, I did, thank you for that reminder. I'd like to make a motion, that we approve Resolution Number 2, 2015 dash...
13.
13, providing input to the Sound Transit Board on ST3.
Second.
Moving seconded, additional questions or discussion? Councilmember Scher, followed by Councilmember Milligan.
Thank you again, Mayor. I'm frustrated, not by this motion, I think this is, this is great. I'm frustrated by the pace of high-capacity transit in our region. And I went back and looked at the 1996 Sound Move Long Range Vision, which was the original planning document for Sound Transit, it's on the website, and it talked about beyond Phase 1, Phase 1 of Sound Transit, possible light rail line extensions already covered by environmental studies include, and there's a bullet point, I-90 between downtown Seattle and Issaquah. That was almost 20 years ago. 10 years ago, there was a diagram produced, which is actually part of our central area plan. It's contained at Exhibit 6, page 44 of the plan, and it's the 2005 Sound Transit Long Range Plan. And if you look at the map, it draws a dotted blue line of potential rail extensions. Now, this time, it doesn't go into downtown Seattle, it goes north and south along the 405 corridor, and connects in along I-90 at East Gate and to Issaquah. So somewhere along the line, the iteration changed to the direction that the rail would travel, but the premise remained the same, which is having light rail come to Issaquah. As we are perfectly situated along the I-90 corridor, we are now a regional growth center, we have Costco headquarters due to expand, we have other major employment centers due to expand, in addition to just the abundance of population growth that we have been experiencing. That was 10 years ago. Now, today, we are looking at the possibility of another ballot measure for ST3, and, you know, I, I full, fully support the wording of this resolution, because as was pointed out, it's not just asking for more studies, it's asking for something to be done. And, you know, the longer and longer this goes on without something being done, the harder and harder it's going to be, and I think this region should have learned its lesson already, with, with all the tortured analysis that's gone on for the last 20 years of how difficult it is to now, here in the 21st century, build high-capacity transit because of all the development that's occurred in the last 50 or 60 years, and people look back and say, boy, those folks 50 or 60 years ago, they should have gotten it together and gotten it done. Well, I don't want to see future generations say the same thing about us. The time has come to get it done, and that means getting light rail out to Issaquah instead of just talking about it. Now, is it going to cost me $20 more a year? Is it going to cost me $50 more a year? I don't honestly know, and that's an interesting question for, you know, myself or Joe Taxpayer, how much more is it going to cost to actually get a line out to Issaquah? But whatever that number is, unless it's somewhat exorbitant, it's worth it, because we need that high-capacity transit. You know, I just got back from a vacation in Albuquerque, New Mexico, and they have a commuter rail line there, and I looked into the history of it, and it went into service in July of 2006, within the Albuquerque city limits. In April of 2007, less than one year later, two more stations opened, one connecting the airport, one connecting Bernalillo and the county seat, and then Phase 2 of the Rail Runner was in December of 2008, less than two years after the system opened, it then connected into Santa Fe. Two years to get two phases of commuter rail service connecting two major cities that are an hour apart, and we're talking about this for 20-plus years in our region. Let's get it done. Let's pass this resolution, let the Sound Transit Board act, and we need to put our interests and the interests of the east side in front, and we need to get it done and get it moving to help our residents and people on the east side connect to their homes, to their centers of employment, to their destinations. Enough talk, enough study. Let's get it done.
Councilmember Milligan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was enjoying the presentation earlier today, because I am a fan of Sound Transit, but I want to say that this discussion brings me back to our most basic goal here in Issaquah, and that is to be a complete and a sustainable city where citizens live, actually work, and play, and in my opinion, commuter rail to the suburbs such as Issaquah sends us in the opposite direction, and it exacerbates problems that we currently struggle with that I want to share with you. Commuter rail fosters what I like to call, and it's hard to say, so pardon me, chronic commuterism. We all need to get to one place or another now and then, but chronic commuterism, I think you know what I'm talking about. Though light rail of ST3 plans to reduce congestions during peak AM/PM commuter hours, it only adds to the capacity, and chronic commuterism, negatively impacts our city. It expands economic imbalances between us and other jurisdictions, it defeats our housing goals, and it promotes suburban sprawl. Regarding economics, as our citizens commute to jobs in other cities, say Bellevue or Seattle, we suffer a brain drain every morning. We don't benefit from having these citizens as full-time members of our community, and we send our economic engines to another city to benefit. And I venture to say that a vast majority of those workers would rather stay and work in their hometown. With regards to our housing goals, in cities like ours, chronic commuterism puts upward pressure on housing costs, and it's making harder and harder for us to ensure affordable housing for the people who do work here. And lastly, though I'd have much more to say for the sake of this, this evening's speech making, commuter rail supportive commuterism increases demand for housing in small cities and rural areas outside the satellite stations such as what would be in Issaquah, fostering further growth and sprawl exactly in the places that we want to protect. I recognize that many in Issaquah feel bringing commuter rail to Issaquah is valuable, it's even in our comprehensive plan, and I respectfully disagree with and trust that I provide a voice for at least a few of people in our town. When I applied to join this council as a member, some of you might recall my, another speech, and my dearest, deepest desire to help city, this city become the best city rather than the best burb, and in that effort, I would not be participating in this resolution. Thank you for your time.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things. I'm going to be supporting this. I think that, I don't think great should be the enemy of good, or good to be the enemy of great, or however it's put. 10 years ago, I guess, wow, time flies, 13 years ago, when I first got here, we didn't have an Issaquah Transit Center, we didn't have a Highlands Park-and-Ride. I've seen extraordinary improvements over the last 13 years. I understand not wanting to have sprawl, however, I'm confident that the Growth Management Act will guide, I have seen the Growth Management Act and its ironclad ability to prevent sprawl, and so I think that within the, the construct of the GMA, I think we're in good shape, should we provide more transit. I do think, I'll take this moment to say, Western Washington has an extraordinarily odd transit system, right? We have Sound Transit, and we have Metro Transit. I, I come from the Twin Cities of Minneapolis-St. Paul, where half of commercial real estate taxes goes into what's called the Metropolitan Council, and the Metropolitan Council is a seven-county funding agency that takes care of parks, it takes care of transit, and so the Twin Cities has the sort of comprehensive transit planning that we have with the GMA with growth. And so it is odd to me that we have such a, a comprehensive growth management system, but, but a lack of a common core transit for Puget Sound, from Olympia all the way up past Everett. And so I, you know, we're going to hear, we're going to talk in, in a minute, I'm going to ask people about this Best Starts for Kids levy, and it's, it, we live in the context of King County being perennially underfunded, and Sound Transit is in better shape in this regards than Metro Transit, but to me, long, there has to be long-term systemic change in both how we organize around transit and park systems, and funding to get to a point where, where things are thriving. And until we get to that point, we're going to be underfunded and playing catch-up for a long time, and it's going to take longer to get the kind of transit into Issaquah that, that many of us want to see. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, then, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2015-13, providing input to the Sound Transit Board on ST3, sign the papers, say aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed?
Nay.
The motion carries with Councilmember Milligan voting in opposition. With that, then, we are now through with our regular business, and we will move to go to the order. Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I promise, I, well, I will try to be quick, that's up to the rest of my fellow councilmembers. We have at PICC this week, we will be coming back to Best Starts for Kids levy, and the motion that will be in front of us, it says potential action item, but I believe this is for final action, is the following recommended position. In order to support the healthy development of children and youth, families and communities across King County, the Sound Cities Association urges the King County Council to place the Best Starts for Kids levy on the November 2015 ballot for consideration by the voters. Now, we discussed this issue at the last Committee of the, Committee of the Whole, we had a nice presentation by Diane Carlson from the county. She has come back, I, I tried to summarize the questions that we had for her, she came back to us with responses on those questions. We are at a point where some of the issues around here, for instance, governance model, has not reached a final decision out of the county. This has not been put before the county commission yet, so we don't have final resolution, but we certainly have a sense of response from Diane. So I would like to ask this council if they have any input as to how I should be representing Issaquah on this issue when it comes up on Wednesday.
I'm sorry, Tollis, did you, was there additional information? Did you provide us any additional information?
Diane Carlson's response, I believe, was sent out to the full council.
Okay.
So that's the, that's supplemental information that we got, her response. There was, there was the stuff in black, and then there was the stuff in red.
It came from you?
No, it came from the county to the council. Bob, am I wrong on this? Did only, did it only come to me? I thought it came to the full council.
Could have missed it. I'll have to check.
Okay.
But I do recall seeing it across the desk, and...
I, I actually saw it also, but, I'll see if you can find out.
July 2nd, from Tina. Tina.
There we go. Tina, do you, do you remember forwarding it to the full council?
Yes, this document was provided by Martha, who serves as the Human Services and Social Sustainability Coordinator for the city, and the document answered your questions from a Cal presentation.
So for people who haven't had a chance to review that document yet, you can certainly give me additional feedback. We don't have to, you know, there's nothing sacred about giving me that feedback this evening, but it's certainly a chance for us to discuss. I'll tell you, like I said, that, you know, the critical issues, the, the two biggest issues that we identified was specificity, and there was a fairly lengthy answer in here, and it boils down to, the county does not want to have its hands tied on exactly how it moves forward. That's what all this language, when it, when it is distilled down. Diane talks about, sort of philosophically, what are the, what are the issues behind how they will evaluate some of the opportunities as they come up, but they just really felt like they couldn't enshrine anything, or did not wish to enshrine anything formally. And then the other issue was governance model, and basically, the punchline on that is they agree that there should be regional governance, or regional representation on the advisory board, and they hope to see the county add that, but again, the county has not made a decision yet, so there's not, we, we not, on Wednesday, we will not have the final answer on that. But we have certainly, at the very least, communicated back to the county, how strong we feel about this issue.
So I'm, I'm, I'm sensing that there are no additional questions, because I see or hear none right now, and that was...
One quick comment.
Yeah.
In reading it, I just found that there wasn't a lot of new information.
Yeah.
So if the concerns were there before, it seems to me like the answers didn't really help with any of that. So not sitting on PICC and knowing how serious those concerns were, was, did PICC seem to be comfortable that these things will get resolved, or is there like a high level of concern that this is just too loose, just too general?
PICC has actually not met, I mean, when, when I sent out the previous minutes, right, and I said, take a look at the minutes and the concerns, PICC has not meant, has not met since that meeting.
Since that meeting.
So I don't know what will come out Wednesday. I do think the regional...
It just didn't seem like there was much new in here.
I, I think the newest piece was the, the agreement that regional representation would be good. Yeah, I agree, on the issue of specificity, there was none.
Not guaranteed it would be good.
Not guaranteed, because they can't speak for the county council, but they are encouraging the county council to put regional representation.
That was just my thought, I just didn't see a whole lot more in here, besides that one point you just said.
I think that's fair.
So as usual, you have the, the guidance you need to go forth and hopefully do the right thing.
Thank you, Anna.
I, I don't, I can't specifically recall the details, but I thought there were two opportunities for regional representation. It was some sort of advisory board in the beginning, and then there was a, I'd have to go, I don't have it with me, but I have to go back to all the materials that I was reading last time, and, and, and I apologize that I did not read what Tina forwarded.
That's very interesting.
Yeah, there's, there's a separate, there's a separate oversight that has to do with a separate piece of money around, and I apologize, I don't have it in front of me. Oh, sorry, but there, there was a second pool of money that was going to have a specific focus, and it was around, I don't want to say social sustainability, but communities of need, and that was going to have its own governance structure, so it may well be that you're referring to that.
Could be. I'm, I'm, I'm just a little bit troubled by the, just the combination, the lack of specificity and the lack of a commitment to making sure that there was some very substantial, meaningful regional representation. And I heard those strong concerns as well, as I was reading the comments from the PICC members, and so I'm, I have a lot of confidence in PICC. And so I'm, I have a lot of confidence in PICC, a very solid body. So I'm kind of reiterating what I said before, but, but if there's none, if there's not new information, then I would, I would still have the same concerns, or maybe even a little more heightened if we're not getting any more specificity or commitment.
Well, I will certainly, what I can do at the very least is I can report back to PICC what our concerns were last time and say that on our two primary concerns, they've not really been, they've not really been addressed.
No.
And I will include that.
Okay. Any other comments on that item? Any, anyone else for good-of-the-order this evening? There is no executive session, and so if there's no other business to come before the council this evening, we are adjourned.
Thanks, Wayne. Thank you.